...on a night they'll always remember and on behalf of-
Quiet.
So noted. Any other changes? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. This time I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a beginning interest by any members of council, Councilor Maves.
Yes, under the consent agenda, 2010-60, the Insurance Claims Adjustment Service.
Okay. Councilor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. At the Corporate Services Committee, CD 2010-09, dealing with the Bellevue Street property, it was unsure of what the Catholic District School Board's intent was at this time.
Okay, so noted. Councilor Di Addati.
Yes, Worship. Check number 339338 in regard to AMO Conference.
So noted. Councilor Anoni.
Check 339339, my AMO, that's also the AMO Conference.
So noted, thank you. And I'd like to disclose that check numbers 339340, 339433, and 339742 are available to myself. Members of council, move on to the next order of business. You may recall at our most recent meeting, Councilor Peter Angelo brought up the recent Emmy Award for the former Niagara Falls native, Mr. Kevin Lafferty. Council passed a motion to recognize Kevin, and he is here with us this evening. And Kevin had a keen interest in movie making from a very young age, and as a teenager, he'd filmed movies with his friends using a silent movie camera. And this was before the days when everyone had access to digital camcorders. Kevin went off to school at Carleton University, majoring in film studies, and after graduating, he enrolled at Ryerson and started looking for film and television-related jobs in Toronto. Like many in his industry, he started at the ground level as a production assistant and has worked his way up. He now has over 20 years in the business and has amassed a sizable number of credits to his name, including work on the Camp Rock movies, Harold and Kumar Go to White Castle, and The Wizards of Waverly Place, a movie for which he recently shared an Emmy for his production duties. Although Kevin has developed a reputation working on many Disney productions, he's currently working on Alphas, which is a science fiction-themed television production. On behalf of city council, we wanted to recognize Kevin Lafferty for his success in the television production field. I'd like to ask him to come forward, please. There is some insider information I should tell you. We were supplied, first of all, our clerk, Dean Arifino, was a contemporary of ours-
Yeah, very much so.
-and was, I think, in school when you were doing those side of the movies.
Yes.
And of course, I don't want to embarrass Councilor Peter Angelo, but of course, he's your cousin.
That is correct.
I'm not sure if that's pecuniary or not. No. I said to Councilor Peter Angelo, you're very proud of your accomplishments, and we are too, as certainly as a city. And we're pleased to present to you with congratulations as an Emmy Award winner, an outstanding children's program to yourself as Kevin Lafferty, the executive producer of Wizards of Waverly Place, the movie. And this is signed by myself and members of council. It's our pleasure to present this to you, and thank you for bringing some great imagery to our city.
Great, my pleasure. Thank you very much. The only thing I'd like to say is that I really, really appreciate this. I'm very, very proud of having grown up in Niagara Falls, and I still have a great many family and friends here, Dean, my mom and dad who are here, my sister. And it's really is a proud, proud thing. Really, as much as winning the Emmy, this means a lot to me. Plus, I didn't actually make it to the Emmy ceremony, so this is the only speech I've been in.
We don't have a hook here, so.
Take it to the bandwagon.
Any members of council wish to make any comments? Councilor Anoni?
I just want to ask the same questions the kids ask you. It's a staple on our TV. We watch it endlessly, Waverly. I love Selena Gomez. What are they like? Is that your kids ask you? Selena Gomez and the Jonas Brothers, my kids are watching. What are they like?
They're wonderful. They're great people.
Oh, that's very good.
Is this really all an attempt at court, the Selena Gomez vote?
Oh, yes. Yes, I love her.
No, really, Selena's wonderful, and the Jonas's are wonderful. We saw Camp Rock Two just premiered last week, too much acclaimed, and a very, very wonderful kid. It's very centered and normal, considering they don't lead very normal lives.
Well, that's very neat. Very neat.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations, Your Worship, to Kevin. And I know that the Arts and Culture started a wall of fame, and I hope that they're watching right now, and possibly Kevin would be a candidate in the future.
You're here? Chair is here right now, so that's good. So, thank you very much. That's good. So Kevin, on behalf of members of council in our city, I wanted to say thank you for your success, and of course, bringing your energy to our city as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Pleasure, Kevin. Take care of the books. Members of council, I just have a few comments I'd like to offer this evening. I'd like to extend our condolences to the family of Mr. Stanley Code, who is retired city employee. Our heartfelt thanks and thoughts, or certainly our heartfelt thoughts, are with his family at this time. In recent events, I was pleased to offer congratulations on behalf of members of council and the good people at Heartland Forest in Niagara Falls. On the weekend, we officially opened the first fully accessible mini-pot in Canada. It was a very exciting day for all involved, and congratulations on such an exceptional achievement in our community. This year's Terry Fox run, the 30th anniversary of Terry Fox's run across Canada, was a huge success. I wanted to congratulate the members of council who participated, and also the local organizers who have reported a phenomenal $37,000 in donations. Niagara Falls certainly came out in record numbers. It was a great run this year. We're pleased that later this week, we'll be able to call our 420 highway, will be known as the Niagara Veterans Memorial Highway, and we'll be joining Councilor Peter Angelo, who will be the master of ceremonies and through his involvement as well. The community unveiling of the new highway signs will take place on Thursday, September 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. on the south side of Roberts. Of course, the council and all members of the community are invited. This location is on the south side of Robert Street between McDonald and Stanley Avenue, and there's access from Kitchener Street. I hope to see members of the public and, of course, all our members of council in attendance to honor our local veterans. Councilor Peter Angelo, do you want to make some comments about that?
Not really, Your Worship. I mean, I'm very pleased to see that it's finally coming forward. I think it's been a year in the process, and we look forward to seeing everyone on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Also, I'm pleased to invite the community to attend the annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on Friday, October 1st. This year, it's being hosted by the Niagara Falls Memorial Fellowship, and will be held at Club Italia. Breakfast begins at 6:30 a.m. and program starts at 7:00. I hope to see many members of our community on October 1st as well. The prayer breakfast is part of an annual Week of Prayer event, and the public, of course, is invited to attend gatherings planned to take place around our city and to come together and fellowship with members of the community. This is the fifth year for the annual Week of, sorry, the Week of Prayer, and this week's kickoff will be held on Sunday, September 26th, at Club Italia at 6:00 p.m. For ticket and more information, residents are encouraged to visit www.rturn.ca for more details. Another reminder as well, that our 1812 Bicentennial Committee is hosting Celebration 2012 on Sunday, October 3rd, at Legends on the Niagara. The gala event will feature dinner, entertainment, silent and live auctions to assist in fundraising for the bicentennial committee. Event tickets are $50 and can be purchased by contacting Niagara Falls History Museum at 905-358-5082. And this concludes my comments for this evening. Move on to communications and comments from the city clerk. Now, we do have a number of comments, but we'll just move forward to the item number one. The Director of Municipal Works requesting approval to extend the scope of the Whiteman Bridge Reavalization Project, which is going to extend the service and repairs to the road service. Moved by Councilor Cario, seconded by Councilor Maves. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Number two, the St. Michael Student Council requesting relief from the noise bylaw. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Di Addati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Number three, city clerk again requesting council approval of the Free Bus Ride to the Polls Initiative. Moved by Councilor Fisher, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Any comments or questions? Councilor Di Addati?
Yes, Worship, I would commend staff on an excellent idea. Anything that encourages more people to vote and for us to express our democratic right, I think is great. And certainly, transportation is a barrier for a lot of people, and I think it's a great idea.
Great, okay. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have Community Artist Niagara requesting relief from business licenses for their event being held on Thanksgiving weekend. It's a waiver of fees for a vendor's license. Councilor Peter Angelo, moved by yourself, correct? Any comment?
Your Worship, I just wanted to say that this is a festival that they're trying to get off the ground, so I think it would be nice for council to be supportive and waive the fees.
Great. Seconded by Councilor Di Addati. Okay, any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Thank you, motion's carried. Number five, Fire Prevention Week. Request that October 3rd to 8th, 2010 be proclaimed as Fire Prevention Week, and that October 9th be recognized as Fire Service Recognition Day. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Fisher. Once again, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Number six, Niagara Falls Ministerial Society, sorry?
Chief Smith.
Oh, Chief Smith. Did you wish to make some comments, Chief? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to let you know, we have a full plate on the Fire Prevention Week for activities within the community, and I just wanted to mention a few of them to you. To kick off Fire Prevention Week, there'll be an open house at the fire stations for about three hours on Sunday, October 3rd, from 10:00 to 1:00. We'll be doing a news story on CHCH-TV on Monday to talk about fire prevention. Information booths will be set up outside, or sorry, inside the casino. We'll be conducting fire drills at schools in Niagara Falls. We'll be on the river promoting fire safety, River Radio Station. We'll be at McBain Center on Tuesday evening promoting fire safety. Niagara Falls Cinemas are running fire safety messages before the shows that week from a website called NoFire, K-N-O-W-no-fire.ca, which anyone can go to, and they have some very innovative ideas that were produced in the Niagara region with fire prevention officers from our area in conjunction with Brock University. On Saturday, sorry, on Wednesday, October 6th, we'll be hosting a Fire Safety Night in the parking lot of Home Depot to promote fire safety with demonstrations and public education going on. On Saturday, we'll be back at Home Depot again, where there'll be kids' workshops building little firehouses. And we're going to be conducting fire drills around the city at businesses that have requested us to do that during Fire Prevention Week, and there'll be another insert in the shopping news again with fire safety messages. So we hope that everybody participates and comes out and makes their homes more fire safe this year.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Are there any questions of the chief? Having seen none, thank you very much, chief. We appreciate hearing the activities you have planned. Thank you so much. Move on to number six, Niagara Falls Ministerial Fellowship requesting that the week of September 26th to October 3rd, 2010 be proclaimed as Week for Prayer in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Councilor Cario, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Number seven, the Ontario Multi-Faith Council requests that the week of October 17th to 23rd, 2010 be proclaimed as Spiritual and Religious Care Awareness Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Number eight, Teachers of English as a Second Language Association of Ontario requests that the week of October 24th to 30th, 2010 be proclaimed as English as a Second Language Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Di Addati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Now, the next one, we have the Honeymoon City Toastmasters request that the month of October be proclaimed as Toastmasters Month in the city of Niagara Falls. And we have Ms. Karen Fraser here to speak to the matter. Karen, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am a current member of the Toastmasters, and I represent Honeymoon City Toastmasters, and we are requesting that October be proclaimed Toastmasters Month for the city of Niagara Falls as it is declared throughout the world. Toastmasters International has been in operation for 85 years and is a nonprofit group that is in operation throughout cities throughout the world and teaches people how to speak effectively, both in business and in their general everyday lives. And it is a wonderful program that helps people gain confidence in their public speaking skills. And we would hope that if anybody's interested, we meet every Wednesday at the Maid of the Mist Campus Building, and we would love to see more people try out their public speaking skills.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Karen? Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Cario. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to item number 10, the Downtown BIA requesting that council approve the replacement members for the Downtown Steering Committee. Councilor Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to make a motion that we disband the Downtown Steering Committee. I'm a little concerned. We had a recommendation come to us at the last council meeting, asking council to spend $420,373.15 on 13 arches and a music and sound system to stream music onto the street. And a majority voted for it, and it got me thinking in the next couple of days that I was interested in a report that must have gone to the Downtown Steering Committee, explaining to the Downtown Steering Committee the value of these arches and showing a rate of return on how these arches would encourage people to come into the downtown. There is no such report. I called staff, and I asked, how did the arches get on the table? And it was explained to me that in the RFP for the gateway, there was a suggestion about an arch. Mr. Grun grabbed on that suggestion of an arch and decided that there should be 13 arches along Queen Street at every intersection. And that's much different than what was in the first anticipated arch for the gateway so that it would stream people into the downtown. Now, I'm a little curious as to how one person can come to a committee without any information or anything behind them, because when I asked staff, can you tell me whose idea the arches were? They said Mr. Grun's. And I said, well, how can you recommend to council from a steering committee this expenditure of $420,000 without any reports or proof that anything is going to prove to bring people downtown? They said they can't because they didn't have it. And when I said, so why did you recommend it? The answer was because Mr. Grun asked for it. I have a hard time spending $420,000 because Mr. Grun asked for it. But I will say also that the downtown then ran a $2,000 ad, $2,000 this cost, to tell people that council passed $420,000 for arches and music to be pumped onto the sidewalks downtown. I tried to get ahold of them. I didn't leave a voice message, but I did call a number of times because a majority of council supported that. I certainly didn't. And I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, that Councilor Wing and I had an opportunity to speak at a service club last week where we got pounded on the money being spent on the downtown arches. So I guess I'm asking council not only to disban, my motion would be not only to disban this, but to reconsider the expenditure of the $420,000 until the Downtown BIA or our staff can supply to council an actual report that tells us that their success in putting a street full of arches in encouraging people to come downtown, and a report that shows their success in streaming music onto the street that proves it would bring people downtown. If you vote for it again later, I get that, if you have something that proves that. But right now, all we had at the Downtown BIA or the Downtown Steering Committee was a request from Mr. Grun. So I'm confused as to how it came to us as a recommendation, but that's my two motions, that we have, that we disband the committee. I think it's redundant because this council is supposed to be the governing body, and that we have a motion to reconsider the expenditure of the $420,000.
We'll separate those motions. Mr. Clerk, you can qualify the requirement for the reconsideration motion.
Council can bring forward a reconsideration motion. I'm not sure that what's being reconsidered is different than last week's decision. I mean, I think the motion is to come back with a report outlining the value of those two aspects of the downtown project, correct?
Councilor Anoni?
Correct. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't remember any time through the presentation was council told that the recommendation came to us because one person asked for them. I really did think that it came to us based on information they had, which is why I called the next couple of days asking for it. I don't remember ever spending that kind of money or having a request come before council that didn't have background proving that that was money well spent.
Yeah, I just, we'll get into that for a second. I think you have the total information. One thing I'd like to correct you on, which you may not be aware of, is that the Downtown BIA does have a contract with the review. I'm not sure how you priced out that ad, but they do have a substantial contract that offers them savings. So did you verify that with anybody?
Yes, I did.
With who?
I called the review today and asked how much the ad cost. It was $2,000.
Well, I did, but they're on a line contract, so I'm not sure if it's still that much.
Mr. Mayor, I don't care if it's $2,000 or $1,800. We're giving them $420,000, and they're spending $2-
Just to qualify.
But I'm saying, I do, I hardly ever make a comment here that I haven't verified before I make it, and I did call and was quoted $2,000.
Yeah, well, we'll have to see on that. Now, Councilor Wing, you want to speak?
Yes, I will second both motions. To speak to the point about the committee, I don't understand why at this stage, so late in the term, we're thinking about repopulating a committee that has basically fallen apart. I mean, last meeting, we disbanded the Trails and Lightways Committee, and I didn't always agree with them. But that was a committee of longstanding, and we disbanded them because their membership had shrunk and the committee was no longer sustainable. I don't know why we would disband them last meeting and then turn around and repopulate a committee in the exact same circumstances this meeting, especially since our CAO has already spoken about doing a committee's review in the near future. You know, this just doesn't make sense at all. And I have to agree with Councilor Anoni's comments about the recommendations coming out of that committee. I've sat on enough advisory committees over the past 13 years to know that they always have staff reports and, you know, sound deliberations, and the recommendations to council are based on well-thought-out ideas. And I'm not seeing that here, so I certainly am willing to second that motion. And as far as reconsideration, if it were any other BIA in the city, whether Victoria Centre, Falls View, Clifton Hill, Lundys Lane, Main and Ferry, the BIA would be paying for the arches and sound system. That is beautification. That is streetscaping. That is what BIAs do. It should be coming out of the businesses' pockets, just like it would in any other area of the city, not out of this funding. We should not be pillaging our sewer account to do this. There was other, there are other items on that approved list, sidewalks and pavement, which that same money could go towards. That's money that's going to be coming out of the general tax base. When it's time to redo the sidewalks and redo the pavement, it's going to be the taxpayers paying for it, when it could be the funding that's in place right now. So we definitely need to reconsider that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Bolbruck, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, by me. I just wanted to make a clarification. Even though the archways was Mr. Grun's idea, the Steering Committee passed unanimously that they in favor the archways. So that's why it moved on. It wasn't a one man's opinion, and therefore, it's a go. It was certainly passed by a motion by members of the Steering Committee.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Anoni?
Based on what report that you had?
Okay.
All I want to know is, how did you come to that, other than somebody saying, this is what I want?
Let's get the answer for it. Okay, Mr. Bolbruck?
Yes, there was a presentation by Mr. Grun of the archways. There was no report, so the councilor's correct on that. It was, basically, the presentation showed how archways that would potentially look like. The committee supported that effort. It's really, we don't know how the archways are going to, I guess, end up as far as a tourist attraction, but they firmly believe, and this is the BIA and it was supported by the Steering Committee, that they feel strongly that they need something that's going to attract people to the downtown, and archways are one tool that they wish to use. But the councilor is correct. There is no formal report that verifies that item.
Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, what kind of a report would you have that would suggest that you could actually prove that arches or music are going to bring people to the downtown area? It's strictly a case of improving the environment and making it a pleasant environment for people to attend, which is not one man's opinion, as it has been suggested. This is something that came from the business improvement area with discussion and dialogue and how they're going to improve the downtown. So it comes from the BIA to the Steering Committee, and it started off, which I favored, one arch at River Road to draw the people up the street. I didn't have a lot of faith that numerous arches were going to make that much difference coming up the street, but that was a recommendation of the committee. Certainly, Mr. Grun was the one who relayed that to the Steering Committee, but I don't know, what kind of a report would you, how would you actually statistically or any other way prove that that was the case? So, you know, either you're in favor of improving the downtown and making it happen there. And, you know, I keep seeing that there's this butting of heads between Main and Ferry and the downtown. I personally support both projects, and my voting has indicated that, to try to revitalize both areas because of the job opportunities, because of the assessment, because of the opportunity to revitalize old areas, and because there are CIP, Community Improvement Programs, that permit you to do that. Now, I asked you, through you, to the acting CAO, what monies are we spending on Main and Ferry, and how much are we spending on the downtown? There seems to be some suggestion that there's a lot of favoritism downtown, where we're on the verge of spending many millions of dollars on the Main and Ferry area, which I support and think we've done. But there seems to be this idea that we're not, we're spending too much, and it's favoritism to the downtown. Can you respond to that?
Mr. Harrison?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through to the councilor. We did do that review, that the two capital projects that Mr. Holman maybe has a better handle on, but the two capital projects in the Main and Ferry area, the Ferry Street reconstruction and some work on Main Street, the amount, total amount of spend is comparable, if not a little bit more, than the amount of money that's being spent on the downtown, the first two phases of the downtown improvement plan. The downtown improvement plan, as you recall, was, the total cost for both phases was approximately $3.9 million, of which we've finished the first phase, and the expenditures that are identified are the next, the beginnings of the next phase. The amount that's at, Mr. Holman may be able to, I don't have the capital budget right in front of me, but the amount that's spent, that is planned to be spent on the Ferry Street reconstruction and the work there is comparable in totality with what we've, what we're spending on downtown.
Okay, what about, what about the museum? How much are we putting into the museum on top of that?
Yeah, we're, well, the contributions of the city is approximately $2 million. The total project, again, is being funded through, it's a-
It's a provincial-federal cooperation, but there's an additional $2 million there?
Yes.
And what have we, what have we got slated for, for the indoor market that we're, we've supported and moving ahead with?
At present, the indoor market isn't, isn't in our capital budget. It is a planned item, but the total expenditures in the millions of dollars, depending on what the scope of the project may, may turn out to be.
Millions of dollars again.
The Councilor Thompson, your comments are well-made. The Ferry Street construction, reconstruction should be included in that as well, so perhaps Mr. Harrison can elaborate on that. I think that's what you're referring to, the infrastructure work that's being done.
No, absolutely. You know, we're spending money on projects that have to be done.
I estimated it more than the Queen Street project.
And, you know, to zero in on one person and suggest that just because somebody makes a comment, everybody jumps to attention, and we all jump on board with this. That's not the case. There was a lot of dialogue. In fact, it was referred to at least two meetings over a couple of months with this discussion, and the BIA fully backing what is being suggested. So I don't want to give the impression that this was frivolous, and I think the idea of trying to get a report that is going to indicate the benefits and how many people are going to be drawn, people are going to be drawn to a pleasant and good environment, and that's all we're attempting to do. So I think, and I think it's kind of unfair that we're doing this discussion without having some representation here from the downtown people to comment on where their ideas have come from and what their justification is. So I think the whole matter should be deferred and have them here. We still have another meeting that we can have before this election and hear what they have to say. But I would like something in writing at the same time to show the differential between the two areas and get rid of this idea that there's some favoritism one way or the other. We're trying to re- We're trying to rebuild our community and make it something special in both areas, and I see nothing negative about that.
Are you making a motion to defer, Counselor?
Yeah, I think the downtown people should have the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to...
Both or one?
Pardon me?
Well, there's two motions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, both of them. You know, let's have...
Well, we have a motion to defer by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. There's no discussion or no debate on that. I'll call the vote. All those in favor to defer, please raise your hands. One, two...
Both.
Both motions. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed, two. Okay, the motion's deferred. Continue on. Do you want to, yes, would you like to speak? Sure.
I'd like to clarify something. I'm not sure where the idea that there's competing areas came from. I happened to mention Main and Ferry after I mentioned Victoria Centre, Clifton Hill, Falls View.
Point of order, are we going to have another discussion on this?
No, I'm just trying to clarify something. It's a point of clarification.
Thank you. Just fine. We're not going to discuss the matter, but you're just clarifying...
Lundy's Lane, no, I mentioned all the BIAs. I mentioned Main and Ferry at the end. I'd just like to point out that the work being done in Main and Ferry was to replace a water line on Main Street from the 1800s to separate the sewers on Ferry.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary at this point, Counselor Wing.
And to long blast replay of River Road, but also, the museum is a, is a city facility, and it was in danger of falling down because of structural issues if we didn't put some money into it. We're looking at putting $2 million into it anyhow. It has nothing to do with the BIA. The BIA there is paying for the streetscaping that's coming up, the lighting and all that sort of stuff.
I think you've made your point, thank you. I think Counselor Thompson wanted to clarify it.
Okay, but I just don't understand where this is coming from, because this isn't about competing.
Counselor, you've made your point, thank you very much, and I think that's the point. You can discuss that further if you wish at the next meeting if it's an issue in the debate.
No, what I, no, I'm trying to corroborate some misinformation that is out, that has been put out there.
It's been clarified, you've had a chance to clarify it. We have, we have no discussion on the motion. That motion was to refer, and it's been taken care of. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, the matter has been deferred. The only thing I would ask is, is that perhaps in the report, the true cost be given to council, because I know that Mr. Harrison said that the project cost downtown is $3.9, but I don't believe that that was the city's portion. So, I mean, I know you mentioned the museum, the city's portion only, which was $3.9, but the city's portion wasn't $3.9 million downtown?
I think it was $1.67, I believe.
Just as a point of clarity, Mr. Mayor, certainly, the report would be about the total cost and the funding sources. As you said, you know, the downtown project had infrastructure stimulus money, and the museum project has the two-thirds funding from other parties, so I think to give a fair picture of what our investment in these assets are, it would include the total cost and what the funding sources would be.
Mr. Clerk?
Well, I'm not really sure what report we're talking about, because what was deferred was merely a vote on something. It wasn't to refer something to staff for a report.
Counselor Peter Angelo, do you want to clarify that, if you would, please?
I don't want to.
Okay. Counselor Thompson, just with respect to the motion you made to defer, we have two motions that were, one motion to defer, two motions that were pending, and that's been done. Did you want to further clarify the report?
No, I think, I think, I want to give the opportunity for the downtown people to be here to express their opinion before we vote on anything. And I want to have all of the factual information. Maybe we could have the initial motion that was made regarding spending up to $12 million that everybody around this table supported for the downtown. Pardon me?
Over 20 years.
Oh, I don't care what it is, over 20 years or 50 years. It's a, it's a motion that was made and is supported by everybody around the table. All they're trying to do is do some work.
Thank you. We'll get to the next report, and we'll discuss that the next council meeting. Move on to the next item, if I would, please, and we have the item number 11 on your addition, your addendum, Autism Ontario requesting that the October be proclaimed as Autism Awareness Month, an invitation to be extended to council to attend open house for the new location. And do we have members present who'd like to speak from autism? Want to come forward, please? We do have a package, and we thank you for the submission.
Thank you.
Would you be kind enough to introduce yourselves, please?
My name is Sharon Swab, and I'm the Regional Director for Autism Ontario Niagara.
Thank you, Sharon.
And I have one of our, our members of council, Jolene Scobie, who is a citizen here of Niagara Falls and a parent.
Thank you. Now, do you have any requests specific to the presentation that you'd like to make in addition to what we have in our package?
Well, there is a special little envelope, Mayor Saki, that was given to you in addition to that, that has a little puzzle piece in it, and that is your invitation to join us and bring your puzzle piece to, it's in, it was in an envelope, bring your puzzle, or the Niagara Falls puzzle, into the full picture of autism in, in the region. There are one in 120 people, one in 120 people are living with autism, so that would then relate to 685 individuals in Niagara Falls that are living with autism. Our organization has, I haven't got the cut paper with me. Hi, girls. Just the top one right there. Just one right here. Our organ, it would suggest that there are 885 people living with autism in Niagara Falls, and we have over 121 families from Niagara Falls that have associated themselves with our organization and whom we support. Autism Spectrum Disorder is a complex neurological disorder characterized by impairments in communication and social interaction, by repetitive and stereotypical patterns of behavior, interests, and activities. Symptoms range from mild to severe, and with appropriate and early and ongoing intervention, many of the associated behaviors can be positively changed. A child with autism becomes an adult with autism. Support services and understanding is a lifelong process. Autism Ontario is a leading source of information referral on autism and one of the largest collective voices representing the autism community. Autism Ontario is dedicated to increasing public awareness about autism and the day-to-day issues faced by individuals with autism, their families, and the professionals with whom they interact. The Niagara chapter receives, on average, three calls a week from families with a new diagnosis. In this past year, our records indicate there have been a 30% increase in new families. 29% of those with ASD at our chapter are between the ages of 13 and 19. We record about a 7% increase in adults on our, at our chapter. We send emails or newsletters to over 850 families, friends, and professionals. We have a library that offers over 800 books, videos, and CDs. We provide over 200 spaces for summer camp, social recreational programs, life skills programs, teen programs, sibling programs. Our spaces average over $800 per child, with families paying about 25% of that cost. Our Autism Ontario camp is Ontario Camping Association accreditation. We collaborate with other autism organizations in the, in the region to provide added value to those living in Niagara. We're one of eight chapters in Ontario that have a realized community potential program, which is an added bonus that provides workshops, social learning opportunities, and family consultation. We certainly want to see all individuals with ASD given a solid start as they face a challenging growth by providing them with resources that will build the foundation for the rest of their lives. So on behalf of Autism Ontario Niagara, I'd like to extend an invitation to Mayor Ted Saki and Niagara Falls counselors and the community of Niagara Falls to attend our open house. The ribbon cutting is Friday, and we are extending it into Saturday as well, so that all interested individuals can visit our facility. For several years, we have anxiously awaited this opportunity to grow our programs and services and support families. With community support directed specifically to this move, we now find ourselves at Goodwill Stokesy Community Village on 36 Page Street in St. Catharines. It's a revitalized brown space, originally a factory. In addition to affordable office space, we benefit from the use of common space for our programs and look forward to the possibilities that will come with this move. The chapter could not provide the services and ports they do without volunteers. We are proud to say that we have over, last year, 150 volunteers that have given over 2,900 hours to the chapter. Having said that financially, Lee, our financial support comes from the community, and it's crucial to our success. We are grateful for the generous support from individuals, organizations, grants, and events. We'll be celebrating both our volunteers and our donors at our open house. We welcome you to learn more about Autism Spectrum Disorders and the Niagara chapter. Our website's www-autismontario.com/niagara. And Mayor Saki, we'd be pleased to have you at our opening and bring Niagara Falls into the bigger regional picture.
Thank you, Sharon. We appreciate your presentation. We, do we have any questions of Mrs. Swab? No? Okay, thank you. The pleasure of council. Move the recommendation, Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor May. All those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you very much. The last item under Communications is item number 12. Legion Week requesting that council proclaim the week of September 20th, 2010, as Legion Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. Move on, and I guess, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items? Is that it? It's got it? Okay. Move on to the ratification reports, ratification of Corporate Services Committee action. I'm going to call on Counselor Peter Angelo's chair.
Thank you, your worship. Calling items that will be ratified from tonight's meeting, a Corporate Services Committee. First report, CD 2010-09, dealing with the Bellevue Street property was deferred. Second report, CD 2010-10, dealing with the Chippewa Boat Dock update. It was recommended that staff continue efforts to solicit all applicable approvals to return the public boat dock to its original location on the south side of the Welland River in time for next year's boating season, and that staff be directed to work with the Chippewa Public Docks Committee in their effort to realize a permanent wharf on the north side of the Welland River. Report TS 2010-46, dealing with intermunicipal transit pilot project. It was recommended, first, that council enter into a three-year pilot project agreement with the regional municipality of Niagara to provide intermunicipal public transportation. Second, the council approved the purchase of three Orion Transit Coaches funded from a region of Niagara grant for intermunicipal service. Third, that council approved the purchase of two Orion buses funded from provincial gas tax subsidy, which will be utilized for our municipal service. Fourth, that RFP P19 2010, for the supply of five buses, be awarded to Orion. And lastly, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreement. Just one item under new business, your worship. It was recommended that staff prepare a report on the speed limits on Montrose Road between Lyons Creek and Niagara Square, and I would say moving on.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. We're going to ratify the in-camera recommendations when we deal with the bylaw, so I'll just postpone that till we get through the consent agenda. The pleasure of council for the consent agenda. Move the entire agenda, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. At this point, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience present who has an interest in a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale with Canadian Bavit bearings limited, respecting the purchase of lands in the city of Niagara Falls and regional municipality of Niagara. Is there anyone present with respect to those lands? Lands located in Glenview on... Nope? Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you like to address it, please?
Well, just your in-camera recommendation was that council approve the agreement of purchase and sale related to Lot 217 Hickson Avenue, which is what the bylaw is in reference to. Your approval of the bylaw will, in essence, also approve the in-camera ratification.
Okay, are there any questions with respect to that? Once again, is there anyone present with respect to the interest in the sale of lands? Okay, we'll proceed on then. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments for the bylaws, to the bylaws to, for council's consideration?
Yes, your worship. With regard, there is an amendment to bylaw 2010-146. What that bylaw is, it's the bylaw to provide for hours of voting on Election Day and reduce hours of voting in institutions and retire... Oh, sorry, not that bylaw. Bylaw 2010-144. That's the bylaw to provide for advance voting prior to Voting Day for the 2010 municipal election. The, the agenda had a list of the proposed advance polls, which was Schedule A. After the production of the agenda, we finalized an arrangement to have an advance poll on Friday, October 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Falls View Casino, and that, that advance poll would be for casino associates. There was two reasons for this. Number one, we had, in our efforts to arrange for polling locations, we had made some arrangements for a poll at the Casino Associate Center on Montrose Road for the residents who live in that area, and as a courtesy, we offered to the casino management that a possibility of doing an advance poll for their associates somewhere at an appropriate location. Part of my job as the clerk is obviously to conduct the municipal election, and one of the duties I feel I have a responsibility is to try to encourage voting. Counselor Diodati made the, made the comment about our initiative for a free bus ride. We feel that this initiative is also positive and will encourage casino associates to vote when it may not be convenient for them to do so otherwise. Obviously, at the casino, you have shift work and the like, and it's just, it is really a convenience. We will be located in their, in their cafeteria. We've been assured that there are no issues as far as security or, or the compromise of the privacy of the vote. Now, having said that, one candidate has informed me that they have objections to that location, which is fine. I appreciate that opinion. We feel that those concerns are unfounded, and the amendment to the bylaw would be to add the Falls View Casino as a location for an advance poll.
Okay. Before we ask for a motion to introduce the bylaws, and bylaws to be given the first reading, I'm going to allow questions of the clerk, so I know Counselor Diodati would like to bring the matter forward.
Yes, your worship, just on this one, and just to throw a little bit of caution to the wind, I'm just wondering if it's a good idea to choose one employer over others for having, I think it's a great initiative, I really do, but I think it should be all or none. I mean, there's all or nothing. There are some other employers that have a lot of employees as well, that, you know, a number of them come to mind, and I don't think we're having polling done, advanced poll voting done at their sites, and it just, it just, it concerns me that we're prejudicial to one over the other, and I wondered if we had thought, given any thought to having it at some other locations. To me, I think it should be an all or nothing. All the employers, we offer to all of them or none. It just seems to maybe sway things one way for one side over other ones, and I just put that out there for discussion, your worship.
And Counselor, I appreciate your comment. I don't think any of us would like to see any, anybody be disadvantaged or even any appearance to be, being either prejudicial or disadvantaging one party over another, so I appreciate your comment, and we may have others from council making comments, so, Mr. Clerk, do you wish to say anything?
Well, obviously, the casino's our biggest employer, so I don't really see this as an apples-and-apples type of situation. Yes, it's, it's a courtesy, yes. We're giving them a perk, I guess, for their employees or their associates that we can't obviously offer to other employers, and we're doing it because we feel that there's a mass there that would benefit for this. It may not be successful. Obviously, each election, we try to do different things as far as our polls, especially our advance polls. In the past, we used to just have them at the Optimist Club twice before the election. Last election, we had them at McBain over a course of a week. This election, as you'll note from the schedule in the bylaw, we have them dispersed throughout the city. McBain Community Center, the Gale Center, Chippewa Willoughby Arena, Niagara Square. I mean, we're going out to Niagara Square to try to get to the public, and we're not the only municipality who's doing these sort of things. Other municipalities in Thunder Bay, for example, they've got a bus initiative to get, to actually get out to the voters. So it was an idea, we thought, because they're the largest employer in the city, and their management thought it was a great idea. You know, like I said, it's a bit of an experiment. We don't know if it's going to encourage increased voter turnout, but it's one of those things that we want to try.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. The question I would have is, workers at neighboring properties, are they allowed to go to the casino that day and vote? They should be, right?
No, this would just be for casino associates. So it's not like a traditional advance poll where you, where anybody could go. This would strictly be for casino associates.
Okay. Counselor Wing?
That, that was my question, was whether it was open to the general public, because when I look at all the others listed here, they're open to anybody who's on the voters' list. I have a problem with an exclusive advance poll that's not open to any member of the public, and whether the casino's our biggest employer or not, you know, there's a lot of other people who work, shift workers, people who work in emergency services who work 12-hour shifts, and I think customs are 12-hour shifts and the police, and all it's like, they might have difficulties getting to the polls as well, so if we're going to do, you know, if we're going to follow this philosophy, then we better have one... police station, and we better have one at our fire stations and Canada Customs. And I'm sorry, I have a real problem with an exclusive advanced poll. I can't support this proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Inoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support it either. I thought the whole objective with increased advanced polling is to get the general public out. If we're going to look at increased areas to have the general public out, I could name you any shopping store on a Friday when the sales start, because the ads come out Thursday. You can put them in pretty much any grocery store, La Cocos, No Frills, we can at Zayer's. You could pretty much go anywhere if you're looking for the general public. But if we're looking just for casino workers to vote on that day, I think we've really taken it out of getting the general public out to vote, because we're just catering to one electorate. Next, we'll be going, mailing ballots to houses and asking people to vote and mail them back in. I don't know how much more you can encourage people to... Not a bad idea. But, I mean, we're supposed to be encouraging the general public to come out and vote. You hope the issues and a good mayor's race and a good councillor's race and the things on the table are enough to do it, but short of driving house to house, that's pretty much the direction we look to be going.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Well, I mean, we are going to Niagara Square for that reason. Secondly, you can vote by mail in a municipality. If a municipality passes a bylaw accordingly, Grimsby's done it for the last two elections. That's a possibility for the future. Yes, this is a bit of a special perk we are offering to the casino. I appreciate the concerns. If counsel has issue with it, we don't have to go there. Like I said, the origin of this was very honorable. It was because they were offering us their space, and we also thought because of the mass of people that work at the casino, this would encourage some of their associates to go out. Their associates could just as easily go to any of the other advanced poll locations. You know, obviously, anybody in the city can go to any of the advanced poll locations.
Okay. I have, yes, sorry.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, we can pretty much stand outside of any public grocery store, given permission, and a lot of us have, and hand out our flyers and shake hands. I don't know how open the casino would be to us being on their property, shaking hands and being at the door when the casino associates go in saying, "Please support me for counsel." But indeed, the reality is, we get the ability to do that.
Well, you can't do that now. You can't do that at the polling station. So, you know, that argument doesn't...
Oh, yes.
I have Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Mays, and Counselor Carrion.
Your Worship, instead of being critical, I was wondering through you to Mr. Arifida whether or not we can include everyone, and why not?
Yeah. We probably can't just because of security reasons, so that's an issue. So, if the location was somewhere else, if it was, for example, at the Associate Center in Montrose where we're having a regular poll, that might not be an issue. But then that sort of defeats the purpose, because then the associates sort of have to leave their workplace to come out and vote, and then we might as well, they might as well just vote anywhere else, either at their poll on Election Day or at one of the other advanced polls.
Yeah.
Your Worship, the reason, there's a valid reason, and I wish you would have said that. The reason might say his part, but obviously, I think anything that will get more people to vote is a good thing, so it's quite a project, Your Worship's voice.
And Counselor Peter Angelo, I don't know if the clerk explained, but the intent was of his amendment to the bylaw was to have the casino associates vote in their own cafeteria, which is not open to the public. So, that's what he was just qualifying, and I asked that question earlier as well, and I appreciate your point. I have Counselor Mays and Counselor Carrion.
I, just one question for the clerk, possibly. Would you have any idea, if they have roughly 1,500 employees, any idea how many of those reside in Niagara Falls? I know a lot of them still live out of town, come here and just reside for the few days that they're working here.
Yeah, I believe they have 4,500 associates. That's what I was told last week. I'm not sure how many of them reside in Niagara Falls. I would think that a large portion of those would reside in Niagara Falls. Obviously, this wouldn't be an opportunity for all associates to vote from out of town, and they're given races. It would obviously be restricted to associates who are, who have voting rights in Niagara Falls. So, and there's nothing saying that they have to vote at that advanced poll. Obviously, they could vote at their normal poll on Voting Day, and the reason why it was thought that we should go to the Falls View Casino is because that's where most of their employees will be in that 10-hour period.
Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Worship. My question was answered.
Thank you. Any other comments? We can certainly deal with this one separately, if you wish. We, I did express to the clerk today a concern that was expressed to me, and, you know, not only should there be an absence of apprehension of bias, but there shouldn't be any appearance of bias, and I think that that may raise some question, and I appreciate the concern of counsel that you brought that forward. So, the pleasure of counsel with respect to this bylaw.
Well, this...
Do you want, well, yes, I'm going to deal with it separately, but do you want to, do you want to remove that location?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Counselor Wayne, you make the motion to remove that location from the advanced polls. Counselor DiDati, you seconding that? Okay, any discussion on that motion? Having seen none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? Two. Okay. So, we'll delete from that bylaw the location at Falls View Casino on Friday, October 15th. Mr. Clerk, you got that down?
Well, as a result, then, the bylaw you've got in your agenda stands.
So, we can remove the bylaw number two. You want to leave it the same? Just leave it as it is, without the amendment? Okay, good. So, we'll approve that bylaw, include it in your package, and the addendum will not include that location. Okay? I have a motion to introduce the bylaws. The bylaws be given a first reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, counsel's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-142 to 2010-148 read a first time.
I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, you've heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-142 to 2010-148 read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? Counselor Carrion, Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was asked by some residents about our asphalt overlay contract. I wonder if I could get Mr. Holman to give us an update as where are we right now with our asphalt overlay contract? What percentage of the amount of money that we allocated for asphalt overlay has been done to date? And how is that contractor performing? And I have another question.
Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, we are complete with both phases of the asphalt overlay contract for this year. Now, having said that, we have not spent the full amount of money that was allocated as a result of some favorable adjustments for AC content. There may be some additional works that we could add on if needed, but at this point, the major streets that we had identified early in the year have been completed.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. My other question, Your Worship, is in regards to the question that the counsel had raised a while ago about council remuneration. I think we had asked that we had a chance to talk about council remuneration prior to the closing of nominations. And here we are. There's two meetings left. Obviously, the nominations are closed, and one meeting left, nominations are closed, and I'm wondering why we haven't had this brought to us. I thought that the idea was to have this discussion and have this counsel give their opinion or set the remuneration for the incoming counsel. And for those who were thinking about whether or not they wanted to run for counsel, I think that we would have set the remuneration, so everyone would know what they're running for. I think that this counsel thought that that was a good idea and want to know why we haven't had it brought before.
I was going to ask our acting CAO that question. Mr. Harrison?
Staff has been, through the mayor, to the councillor, staff's been working on that report, and I believe that the director of HR and myself and the clerk will be bringing forth a report on, at the next council meeting.
Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Worship. Then I'll wait to make my comments then. It still doesn't solve the problem, or it doesn't solve the intent of what we wanted to do. We wanted to have this discussion prior to the closing nominations, but I still think it would be better then than after the election. I think it's important for this council to set the remuneration. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. In your package, I hope you were all able to read the highlights for the library from April to June and see how exciting and what a wonderful season we've had so far and how busy the library has been. They keep putting this in our package so that we do know and understand the activity that is going on there. The other thing I want to bring forward is, a couple weeks ago, I talked about the Ives birthday of 100 years. I have a gentleman in this village that has been very active, Sam Jaeger, and he's been out looking everywhere for a location. And he's found the street of Sophia between Bridgewater and Main Street with no house addresses. So, he has asked that I bring forward a motion to change that name to something to do for the Ives family. There is no houses there with an address. So, I'm going to make that motion, that we look at that, because if we wait for a report, possibly it'll be how long. But that small section between Bridgewater and Main Street has no houses. So, I'm going to make that motion.
You're making the motion, then? Would you qualify exactly, that the street be changed from name?
Yes.
Would you qualify that, please?
Yes.
From Sophia to Ives?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Thompson?
Ives, second.
Okay. Just a point of clarification. Does staff have to notify anybody with respect to this change?
Not if no one lives there.
There is no one, there's no address there. From Main Street to the Lyons Hall, there are two addresses. One is in favor and one is hesitant. So, right now, we would like to just do the short section. So, that's my motion.
Okay. Fine. We do have a motion on the floor to change the name of Sophia Street to Ives. Counselor Wayne?
Question. Is there, are we talking about taking a street that has two sections and renaming one section? No? Okay, because I just, I didn't follow the last bit of...
Counselor Fisher, do you want to clarify that? It ends at, begins at...
From Bridgewater to Main Street, Sophia Street. There are no house addresses there, and that's the section we would like to rename in honor of the Ives family.
Okay, and I can certainly appreciate the intent. I'm just wondering, does Sophia Street run further? Because are we talking about one section of a street?
Yeah. It ends, it's a short block?
Yeah. No, I'm just concerned, because I don't know how many criticisms I've heard over the years of Highway 20 becoming Lundys Lane, becoming Ferry Street, becoming Victoria Avenue. You know, when you have different names for different sections of the same street, it creates confusion sometimes. And I can appreciate somebody's gone to the effort of finding a street where no one lives, but isn't there a process that staff generally follows when it's proposed that the name of a street be changed? I remember in recent years, somebody proposed that Pure Lane be renamed, and staff ended up doing up a report. I just don't want to jump without following the process that we normally follow.
Mr. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I think that's fair. And let's have a report back, give the details with respect, because talking to Counselor Fisher, I guess there is a couple of houses further on up, and we might as well have all the information. I would so move if we get a report back.
I was going to ask Mr. Arifida to clarify that for Counselor Wayne. So, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should come back with a report. I think that's appropriate about our process. We'll figure out what it is by the time the report comes.
Just a comment. The two houses that are on the extended part, one is agreeable, one is hesitating right now, but Mr. Jaeger is working with them and has incurred all cost.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Well, I mean, that's slightly different, because what I originally understood was that you were going to take the section of Sophia that had no municipal addresses on it and rename that portion. Sophia then goes from Main to Welland, does it not? So, that section does have houses. So, I mean, you have to make a decision. Are you going to rename the entire, you're going to change the name of Sophia to Ives? Then, there is a process in the sense that we try to find out if there's any historical significance to the name Sophia. Sometimes that will open some, you know, hornet's nest as far as what people, you know, why the name got there, that sort of thing. But refer it to staff, and we'll come back with a report.
Thank you.
Okay, so referring to staff in your request. Any further comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Counselor DiDati?
Yes, Your Worship. I've got four items I'd like to bring up. First off is to ask this counsel to proclaim the month of November as Movember. And, Your Worship, it's a little bit lighthearted, but it's actually serious in nature. It's a worldwide movement. It's gaining a lot of momentum here in Canada, and what it is, is during that month, all the gentlemen and whoever else wants to join us are welcome to grow a mustache to draw awareness to prostate and testicular cancer. Prostate affects one in six men, Your Worship, and it seems like a simple thing that everybody can do that will draw attention to something that's actually very serious. And I would make the motion, Your Worship, that we do proclaim the month of November, Movember, and encourage everybody, all the gentlemen, to grow mustaches.
Moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions?
Yes, maybe. We'll ask for the, we'll present the motion. All those in favor?
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Hopefully, Counselor Thompson will shave his off so he can grow it back again. We'll have a little bit of fun. Your Worship, there was a story recently, and it's unfortunate that mailboxes in the city are disappearing, you know, because the federal government has made a decision to cut back. And I had a senior the other day come to me, very, very upset. She doesn't drive, and she said, "I understand email is popular." She said, "I still use the old-fashioned way, buying postage and mailing it." She said, "Unfortunately, I now have to take a bus to mail a letter. I don't think that's reasonable." And, Your Worship, that's great that the federal government drops it on us, that they're reducing the service, although we do pay a fair cost for mailing a letter. I would make the motion, Your Worship, that we petition our MP to come up with a solution, not just create a problem, but to come up with a solution to either replace the mailboxes or come up with a system by which people can have access to mailing their letters, Your Worship. The one lady had suggested, "Why can't I put it in my mailbox?" And when the mailman comes to pick it up, and I said, "You know, I'm not really sure, but maybe we can bring it forward and ask the federal government to try to rectify the problem that they've created for our seniors." And I would make that motion, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Wayne. Give me a second.
Then I want to speak to it.
Go ahead, please.
You know, and if it's a matter of cutting costs, maybe they don't need to have daily pickup. Maybe it can be once weekly or, you know, every couple of days pickup at the... But reinstall the mailboxes, because I've noticed where they've disappeared as well. And, I mean, I remember mailboxes that have been there for decades. All of a sudden, they're gone, you know. So, and I can appreciate the difficulty it's creating.
And members of the council, we had a call in our office a week and a half ago with respect to the mailbox disappearing on Clifton Hill, and our office made a call to the post minister's office, and we're waiting information back, and it might be part of a rationalization. They do look at each city on the rural routes, but they didn't say anything to us about looking at the current urban routes. So, that motion, I think, is a well-founded motion, so we'll ask for your support. So, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. A third item is regarding the methadone clinic, Your Worship, and I'm hoping that we can get some update on the status. I know I brought it up here during the summer, that there was plans to build and open a methadone clinic on Victoria Avenue directly across from St. Pat's Elementary School and St. Pat's Church, and I believe it was very irresponsible and a very inappropriate location. And I know, Your Worship, that you did meet with the doctors opening the clinic, as well as some other concerned citizens and members of the parish and whatnot. And I was, I was under the impression that they were on their way to finding a new and better and more suitable location. It was brought to my attention recently that they apparently are back in that original location, and they are planning to open up there. And I just wondered, Your Worship, if we could get some kind of update.
Sure. I'd be glad to share with you what experience, and I do appreciate the fact you brought this matter forward. I was asked to attend a meeting at St. Patrick's School in August. We attended a meeting that was called by the school board, actually initially by their solicitor. Attending the meeting was the superintendent of the schools, Mr. John Crocco, the principal of the school, one of the teachers in the school, Father Gerard as a parish priest at St. Pat's, Dr. Fraser Mackay, and two of his associates who are partners, along with Mrs. Kathy Crabbe, who represents the Catholic Women's League. She happens to work in my office as well. We expressed our concern, the counsel's concern, and I guess there was another individual who was a parent. We expressed our concern that the location of the methadone clinic was inconsistent with what we were trying to achieve in rebuilding our downtown core, and the fact that this methadone clinic would be located across from a school where children are attending and perhaps even be subject to unfortunate circumstances that may arise with people who may come and go from the clinic, or even identifying individuals who may come and go right across from the school, let alone the church. And at that point, by the way, a building permit had been issued by the city of Niagara Falls. It was in compliance... It was in compliance, and they had done substantial work to the premises. I think we made our point to Dr. Mackay, and he said to us unequivocally that he would not be opening a clinic in that location. And it was going to be a fully occupied clinic with three doctors who specialize in addiction, and they're located close to the facility that is in the plaza that would do referrals to them. And we had suggested if they were in a clinical setting, where when you go to the hospital, if you go down a hallway, you turn right or left, people don't know what you're there for, you could be going to psychiatric, you go going to emergency, or x-ray, whatever the case might be, that that might be more acceptable. At that point, we suggested to the doctor that they consider other locations, and we presented some ideas to them. And I attended another meeting where we called the meeting with the manager of the Niagara Falls Hospital site, and we introduced him to Dr. Mackay with the possibility of opening a clinic in the hospital. And that was a, it seemed like a reasonable approach. Unfortunately, the hospital doesn't have any plans to accommodate a clinic at this stage, and Dr. Mackay is still looking. The business development department in our office has introduced Dr. Mackay to a couple of other locations in clinical settings, in buildings where we have other practitioners, and we're hoping to redirect them away from the school and that location. So that's the latest that we have. Dr. Mackay has said to me personally, that I could convey, that he will not be part of that. His partners have substantial investment in the clinic location in terms of the fiscal improvements, but at this point, he said he wouldn't be locating there himself. So I'm looking hopefully at the alternative sites that have been presented to Dr. Mackay by our business development. Also, we do have a coordinator, as you know, who works with Dr. the locations, and we're hoping to introduce a potential doctor to that location as a potential clinic for a practitioner's office, because it would be ready-made and complete, and they would be able to move in. And that would alleviate hopefully some of the pressure that, the financial pressure that's on the doctor with his two partners, and a new doctor will be able to take that over. So that's being done as well. So it's not over yet, Counselor, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and hopefully we'll find some resolution. Counselor Wayne.
The problem with this clinic is, no matter where it pops up, and this is the third location I've been aware of, of this sort of clinic, is it just really doesn't fit with what's around it. But it's permitted as a commercial use in commercial areas. What we need to do to solve this problem is send a resolution to the province and follow it up to make sure that it isn't just set up there and ignored. But there's some sort of relevant legislation that needs to be changed to require a separation distance, just as we have for adult entertainment parlors and body rub parlors from sensitive uses, residential places of worship schools. That is what we need for these kind of clinics, is a requirement that they be a certain distance from these sensitive uses. So I'll make the motion that we send a resolution to the province, asking them to change the necessary legislation to require this.
Is there a second to that motion?
Your Worship, I want to speak.
Okay, yes, but just asking for a second or for a secondor? Counselor DiDatti? Okay, and Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, when this first came up, I mean, that's exactly what I said to Mister Aifida, is that we need some bylaw in place, much like we did for the adult entertainment parlors. And I don't think it's the province really that creates that bylaw. I think it's us. And if you ask Mister Aifida, he's going to tell you that a bylaw to, I guess, regulate where these methadone clinics can start up is in the Penske, I mean, the pending file that is supposed to come back to council. Now, when it's coming back, I'm not too sure. Maybe Mister Aifida can update us. But I think it's incumbent upon the city actually to pass restrictions, not to wait for the province to do it for us, Your Worship.
Well, obviously, it's been referred to staff, but planning staff would be the ones who would take the lead on this. I've had some experience myself with some of these issues in the past, and I've, you know, I've told Mister Hurlovic that I'd be happy to meet with him on this issue. I agree. I mean, I think you have some power within the zoning bylaw to do certain things. The only problem is making the distinction on types of clinics, and, you know, I'd have to defer to Mister Beeman on that sort of thing, because we wouldn't want to get into some slippery slope where we're defining or, you know, treating some clinics different from others.
And just like to qualify for the benefit of the council, this isn't a methadone clinic. It's a drug treatment facility where doctors would operate a clinic, but they were not dispensing methadone. They're dispensing another type of drug, which is replacing methadone. So if we say the word "methadone clinic," it may not apply to this clinic, so you have to be aware of that. So it's a substance abuse clinic where these people are actually were practitioners, and they have a facility in St. Catherine's, and they actually manned this facility as practitioners, and they treat patients who are addicted to substance abuse. But they used another drug, they're using another drug that's replacing methadone, so just not to qualify it as a methadone clinic as carte blanche. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, just to follow up, I mean, I agree with Mister Aifida, and I guess I'll wait for the report to come back. I hope it comes back at the next council meeting. But I think, again, it's incumbent upon this municipality to pass our own restrictions. I don't think that we should wait for the province to set down restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wayne?
The reason I proposed the motion I did is, I have tried to deal with complaints about these types of clinics in the past, and I was always told by staff that they are permitted as commercial uses, and I don't know whether it's the Planning Act or what. But our hands are tied at the municipal level. That's what I've been advised. Otherwise, I would have had something on the floor for us to deal with it here before now. But I really understand it's the Planning Act that permits them.
Yeah, I guess, I know I'm going to refer to our planner, but, you know, I guess if somebody walked into a doctor's office and got consultation on a drug addiction, they'd be doing that in a physician's office. So this happens to have more people coming because it specializes, like somebody might specialize in bones, and somebody else is in arthritis and whatever. So I'm not sure how we qualify that, but perhaps I can ask Mister Bulbrick if he has any background he can offer us in respect to the use or intended use. We talk about in our zoning bylaw, a clinic, and I'm not sure if we can restrict the clinic if it's a drug treatment clinic, would that then close up the potential for all medical practitioners to give advice to physicians, to their clients or patients on their abuse?
Yes, Mister Mayor, that's a difficult question, and Counselor Wayne is perfectly correct. We don't distinguish between types of clinics, and we can certainly investigate on behalf of council. I just don't know what we can come back with. I know the province is really clear in not wanting to see distant separations even amongst, you know, various types of homes, for example. So, but it's worth our while to investigate further. I understand the comments, and I understand the position of council, and we can certainly do that for you.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Hey, Your Worship, and if we can pass a bylaw that restricts the locations of the adult entertainment parlors and also the massage parlors, then I'm sure that it's in the municipal act that we have the power to restrict these clinics from opening in certain places.
Mister Clerk?
Well, there's specific language in the municipal act about adult entertainment parlors, so that's explicit. I don't think that they make distinction between different types of clinics. And I mean, what we would be looking at would be likely separation distances from insensitive uses as opposed, you know, that's how we would deal with the issue.
It's a very difficult situation. Mister Beeman, would you like to offer a comment, please?
The one, the other difficulty that is, that you run into with this type of land use regulation is even if you try to define different kinds of clinics, is actually when you go to enforce the bylaw, actually proving you've found the beast you're trying to regulate. On the surface, many of these types of operations look exactly the same. And I think that's something that, from the mayor's comments, are coming towards that, going along down that line. To a certain extent, you're relying on self-reporting. I mean, how do you differentiate between, some practitioners call what we would consider a methadone clinic, a pain treatment clinic, or a rehabilitation clinic? So it's going to be a challenge if it can be done at all.
So, Mister Clerk?
Just one final thing. Mister Hurlovic and I had some emails back and forth on this issue because of the desire to bring back a report. He, and I don't know where he got this information from, the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that facility across from St. Pat's would be a referral agency, that there actually wouldn't be any dispensation of methadone or methadone-like treatment there, that that actually is going to take place on Queen Street at the pharmacy doctor's office.
Well, just to qualify that, Mister Clerk, the doctor did say, described that there were three locations in Niagara that dispensed this type of drug. And I'm not sure the application he has forward was for a clinic and, I believe, a drug facility, like a drugstore. And I haven't seen the inside to tell you whether it's set up like a drugstore or not, but there are going to be three locations that would provide this type of drug. Queen Street location was one, and I think they may be one, and I'm not sure where the other one is. So it's a difficult situation, and I don't know, and I appreciate your concerns. All of our council, I'm sure, has the same concern. It's an awkward situation, and the doctors apologized. They had somebody do their site selection, and whoever did that site selection didn't have any regard to the fact there was a school. They saw the church, but they didn't have any regard to the school. So it's a difficult situation. So we're still working with them. They haven't said that they would not move, and so there's still, there's still some movement, hopefully, that we can achieve. Counselor DiDatti?
Yes, Your Worship, and I appreciate that it's a necessary evil, and that it may be a referral clinic, or may be something being dispensed other than methadone. The problem is, Your Worship, is the clientele, and although it's necessary, the clientele will show up there. And many of them are addicted to a lot of bad things, and will do a lot of things to get at them. You know, it's not their typical personality. It's the withdrawal or the drugs, and unfortunately, there's kids right across the street. Matter of fact, the schools are Terry Fox Walk, taking place right in front of the building. It's absolutely inappropriate regardless. I know we need it. Unfortunately, that's absolutely an inappropriate location. And I've already spoken with business in the plaza there, and they are building the clinic. And the workers have said it is the methadone clinic, and they try to downplay the significance. And unfortunately, I don't agree with the, I think it's a very irresponsible location, Worship.
Yeah, and once again, Counsel, I just want to advise, it's not a methadone clinic, but it's a drug dispensing clinic, I guess, or it'd be a drug treatment center, I should say more so. And the doctor, we did express those very concerns, and I said, you know, this is just inconsistent with what we're trying to do in redeveloping our downtown core. As I said earlier, and I said to the doctor, if this was located in a hospital or a clinical setting, nobody would know the difference. Nobody would be upset about it. Because if you walked into a medical building and you happen to have a bone disease, or a social disease, or whatever, and you have, you had an addiction, nobody would know whether you're going right or left, or to what door you're going. So it's a very difficult matter to deal with. And this one at street level is awkward, I think, and I said that point to him. Doctor Mackay has had a long experience, I guess, working with addiction matters, and the people he has with him are specialists, and they do have this facility already, and I think in St. Catherine's, they set up there already. So we are very sensitive to it. I expressed the concern of council, and your concern particularly, as well as the concern that was expressed by the school board and the parish priest. One of the members of staff, did you want to make a comment? Is it Mister Beeman, do you want to make a further comment?
There's just one other matter that I think is important for council to be aware of, and that the building permit has already been issued for this thing. That would mean that even if we did pass a zoning bylaw, this one would be illegal non-conforming use. So I just want to warn council about that particular thing. We won't be able to get at this one if it continues to operate with our new bylaw, assuming we can come up with one. We would not be able to go after this particular clinic in the current state of the law.
Thank you very much. So pleasure of council. We have a motion on the floor. Mister Clerk, can you read the motion, please?
Yeah, I forgot it. Well, I mean, I think that what you suggested, Counselor Wayne, is already implicit in what was already referred to staff, because in that motion, in the Penske file, as Counselor Peter Angelo indicated, it was also to petition the province on this. So we know where we're going, you know, that was part of your motion already. So I'm not sure we really need to do it again.
Has the province been petitioned?
No.
Okay. I mean, I'll withdraw my motion if you guys can hurry it up.
Well, we're not really sure what we're petitioning them on, because we're not sure what the state of the law is with regard to this. I mean, staff still has to get together and do our research to, you know, and then when we see what, you know, if there's a, I guess, gap in the act that we need to petition the province, we would do so.
All I know is that I've been frustrated in the past trying to address this, because apparently this use is permitted as a commercial use in a commercially zoned area. End of story. That somehow needs to change, and since the province governs us through the municipal act, the planning act, whatever, there's obviously something in one of those acts that needs to be changed, so this doesn't happen again.
Right. So course of action, Counselor DiDatti, you made that motion. I'm sorry, Counselor Wayne, you seconded it. Yes, okay. Do you want to withdraw? What would you like to do?
Well, I don't know. If this motion was already passed a long time ago, then, you know, why hasn't it happened?
Mister Clerk?
Because we don't know what to write in the letter yet. That's what it comes down to. Well, you know, if there's a gap in the legislation, we have to figure out what that gap is, so when we petition the province, we know what we're talking about.
Perhaps, can we ask for a staff report, members of council? Counselor Wayne, would that help?
Yeah, sure. I'll change my motion and ask this.
Okay, the secondor, Counselor DiDatti? Did you hear what she said?
Well, yeah, I said we have a staff report.
Okay. Counselor Ainoni?
So when does the staff report come back? Does it get added to the Penske report? That is genius. Does it get added to that? Because I just asked my fellow council chair, remember the report we got with the list of things that have not come back to council? Does it get added to the bottom of the list of things that have not come back to council? Because it doesn't make sense that something in June would still be sitting in your pile because you don't understand what we've asked. Maybe an email, what did your motion mean? Or what was your intent so that we can get it out? Because I think the residents who are going, who are complaining to us really think when we make a motion here, something actually happens.
Yeah. Mister Clerk, I think you can address that.
Yeah, I'm not going to debate that issue. I mean, the fact is, there was a motion on the methadone clinic a number of months ago for staff to look into it, and to look into what could be done to petition the province. Planning is the department that has been tasked with that, and when we get that information back, I'd be happy to bring back a resolution to make this council, you know, look good, as I always do.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, and just to add on to that, part of the motion as well was for staff to investigate a regulatory bylaw that council could implement.
I'm sorry, did you hear the last part?
Part of, part of the motion that Mister Aifida was talking about was that staff investigate a regulatory bylaw that council can act to...
So you want to reinforce that tonight? We can do that? So that's what we'll do with this motion?
Sure.
Right? So you heard the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Counselor DiDatti?
Yes, thank you, Worship, and one last item. Your Worship, I just wanted to bring this up regarding the NHS, Your Worship. And Friday, September the 10th, it was on the front page of the paper, that at the region, Your Worship, a motion that this council had unanimously supported for a resolution, a resolution that you signed, Your Worship, that went to the region asking for a provincial investigation of the NHS, you decided for some reason to vote against it. I'm just wondering, Your Worship, if you are privy to some new information that you didn't have at that time, that caused you to change your vote? And my other question is, and if so, you know, you haven't shared that information with the rest of the council. I think, I know that two of the Niagara Falls regional councillors did vote for the investigation by the province into the NHS for a lot of reasons. And I think the eight of us deserve some kind of an explanation why you never brought our resolution, why you never supported the unanimous resolution in this council, Your Worship.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for bringing it forward. Yes, there was additional information that came to light, and I have substantial information to like to share with you. As you know, the matter is a provincial matter, and I have spoken to our MPP on a number of occasions and expressed our concerns with trying to provide the best healthcare we could and we can. As you know, we have, as a council, all shared this concern, and I've expressed my concerns to you in the past. I voted in favor of the motion here, it was unanimous, and the first thing I said when we heard the presentation, and the purpose of the meeting on September 8th was to allow the NHS to respond to the comments by the Ontario Health Coalition, and we heard substantial information that was given to us, which wasn't explained when you sat at this council chamber on August 6th and made that motion. A couple of things have happened. First of all, and I think the regional chair made this very, this point very clear, that when you're at the region, you don't necessarily come as a parochial council, you vote on your conscience for what you hear at that council meeting, so there is freedom to do as you wish, but the first thing I said when I spoke was, that our council approved the matter to review unanimously. We were one of six councils, total, there was Stourl, Niagara Falls, Fort Erie, Port Colborne, Wayneville, and Welland. When we listened to the presentation about the matter in respect of the Ontario Health Coalition's comments, and likewise, we had a chance between yourself, Counselor Diodati, Counselor Iannoni, myself, and our CAO, to make a presentation to the minister directly. And at the Association of Municipalities in Windsor, we had that opportunity, you expressed a concern, I recall the comments you made to the minister at the time, again, you did express the concern we had, we all enforced that concern about the review, and the minister responded that she would welcome any advice on how to restore the confidence of the people of Niagara regarding healthcare, and that was as far as the commitment that she made to us as a delegation representing this council. That was done before the presentation to regional council, and we had the chance to express that. Also, it would have been, the easiest thing would have been to vote against the review at the region, it was not an easy decision for me, but it would have been easier to vote for the review than not. However, the new information that we had, I couldn't, in all good conscience, allow the taxpayers to foot the bill for yet another review, costing in excess of half a million dollars. And when we were, when we were told that, and of course, the fact that the matter has been reviewed, knowing that the NHS has endured more than 10 years of reviews in the past, 10 reviews in 10 years, and the fact that the indicator is that the reviews aren't substantiating anything, they're not, they're not solving any problem. What we need to do is to let these people do their jobs and move forward, is, in my mind, is the right thing. The council had deliberated this at length, and there are a number of points that the NHS had pursued and explained to us, and I think, if you had the benefit, you could have certainly attended, if you wished, to attend that meeting, but they expressed this interest to all those who were in a presence, a number of people from Fort Erie were there and Port Colborne, there were 18 members of council there that night, one member declared a conflict, and the pertinent points that were brought forward that evening were that everyone be ensured the opportunity to access quality healthcare, and that was the goal of the NHS. NHS, their desire was to work constructively with the communities and their elected members in the best interest of patients and families. The challenging, challenges facing healthcare in Niagara and across Ontario are significant, especially with our aging population that we have right here in the region, as you know, our people, our population is older, and somewhat sicker, we talked about that. The fact that the NHS needs governments to work with them to solve the problems, the NHS has undergone multiple independent reviews of operations and finances, and although we appreciate that it's a prerogative of the Health Coalition to attend and to lobby local councils for support, another review or investigation, in our opinion, in my opinion, would not solve the challenges facing the hospital. Niagara, again, just to mention these points, Niagara Health recently received full accreditation, they mentioned to us, this is something we didn't know, an exhaustive independent evaluation of the quality of hospital programs and services against over 1,800 quality indicators and national standards. All aspects of Niagara Health were reviewed as part of the survey, including programs and services, patient safety, quality improvement, risk management, leadership, infection prevention, and control, and medication management. This is a tremendous achievement, that we are told. All aspects of NHS's operations have been reviewed and compared to industry best practices since amalgamation in 2000, and the NHS has demonstrated its operations are run efficiently. Improving quality of care is our number one priority, is what they expressed to us. Wait times for cancer surgery, cataract surgery, hip and knee replacements, and TT stands have steadily decreased over the past six months, they've given us those figures, and we're there working hard on decreasing wait times for the patients in the ER. We understand that changes are taking place as well, in healthcare in Niagara are difficult for many people, and the community, the hospital system itself has faced a number of these challenges, and there's a new interest, a level of funding, increased level of funding, which we were able to receive, they got additional $14 million, which was received several months ago, which is going to help that the Niagara Health System has the resources it needs to serve Niagara. The 2010-11 funding, the LINs utilized a new funding format whereby there was a portion of the eligible economic funding increase at not at risk to hospitals, and a portion at risk based on performance, on the Minister of Health with priority indicators. Again, there was a performance indicator that showed that out of seven negative, or seven red indicators, five had turned blue to positive, which is something this council didn't know. Since the year end, we've made improvements, they've made improvements in a number of these indicators, and are now performing better than the LIN targets. The NHS acknowledged that they have more work to do with the improving ER wait times, they have a great number of initiatives that are underway to do that, and it's important to note that I did recently, when we attended the meeting, hear that the targets are, for EDR exceptionally, I should say, are performing below standard. They have three of the UCC, the Urgent Care Center sites, being the Ontario Street Site, Port Colborne Site, and Fort Erie Site performing better than the provincial targets, but the other three large sites are not, the larger ones being Niagara Falls, Welland, and St. Catharines. They look at the combined performance of all these sites when they benchmark against these targets. What we found out, that they're, they've done some beneficial things, they've hired five new doctors in Niagara Falls alone to work in a merge, five new doctors from Manitoba, that's great news. Also, I was requesting that they assist us, and we work with them, because of the transportation costs that we endured last year with the Niagara specialized transportation, we had a $255,000 transportation bill that was absorbed by the region, but that was mainly due because of people who were being transported from Niagara to St. Catharines for dialysis. So I went to the NHS, and I said to them, do us a favor, give us a consideration of moving a dialysis unit here first, and I'm pleased to announce that they have, they have done so, they made that commitment. That final approval is now sitting with the ministry, but the building next door, you saw in the paper a week or so ago, was announced that they are going to have a dialysis unit, dialysis unit in Niagara Falls, so our residents don't have to travel to another city for that service, so I appreciate the fact that they're, they're building upon that as well. So there's a number of positives that I felt, rather than spending a half a million dollars on another report, and putting this back even further, we'll get on with our care, and I was one of five mayors that, actually, five mayors were there, four of us supported the motion, and we replaced it with another motion, that talks about cooperating, and the fact that there's going to be some reviews of the operations in Fort Erie and Port Colborne after two years, is something that Fort Erie and Port Colborne have agreed to, is something that is now planned. So, there's a number of things, and I don't want to take more time to explain, but I certainly am pleased to answer any other questions, and I did have a chance to explain this to some people when I discussed this with them, and we had, we didn't have this opportunity to do so in the paper, but certainly there were a number of initiatives that we heard about, that were, was new information. So, again, the unanimous approval of council was requested, that they looked at another motion that came forward, and that motion was, I think, successful at 12 to 3 in that regard, and so a number of things have transpired that did not happen when, or we did not have the advantage of listening to when we made that motion.
Okay, thank you, Worship, I appreciate that, and I did go through the PowerPoint that we were sent today from, by the NHS, and I guess my concern, Worship, is that I know that the mayors, in this case, a lot of them voted together, but I understand the mayors all meet, or they all met before the meeting, and I'm not sure the nature of that meeting, or if that was to discuss what direction they wanted to take. What I do know is, there was a lot of people away from that meeting, and I'm sure that affected the outcome, because the chair's golf tournament was on the regular night, so they did it the day before, and unfortunately, a lot, only 17 were actually there, I understand.
And Counsel, I should explain, this was a committee meeting, the matter has to go before council this Thursday, and in respect of that, it has to be ratified, and we expect more people to attend. This was a committee at whole, and the meeting you referred to is a meeting that the NHS, they provide quarterly update meetings, I've attended those regularly in different locations, the last one we had was last week, and that's a regular meeting that's held, that people are invited to go to, so we attend those on a regular basis.
Yeah, and I've been to those meetings, I just find there, it's a lot of propaganda, I don't find it's very productive or useful information. The PowerPoint here, though, and I mean, I think it's great that we have the dialysis coming, I think that's wonderful. I also think it's something of a red herring to distract us, or to detract us away from what's actually going on, Your Worship. I think we've got some very deep-seated problems here with our hospital and with the NHS, there's very, very poor morale, and they mentioned there's only, there's only 700 complaints this past year, only, and I think that's 700 too many, and I think that scratches the surface, Your Worship, and the reason for that is because most patients are apathetic. In other words, Your Worship, most patients can't be bothered, they feel they're not being listened to, they feel their efforts are in vain, and most of them quietly go home in disgust. And, Your Worship, I know this for an absolute fact, matter of fact, I talked to a gentleman the other day, at a Rotary event, he's a World War II veteran, who spent five days in emergency before being admitted, Your Worship, and there's a gentleman who never complained, so he won't be part of those 700. I've spoken with many seniors, Your Worship, I can tell you right now, many seniors are moving away from Fort Erie and Port Colborne, because they don't want to be next to a hospital that doesn't have full emergency services. Your Worship, I think that, self-explanatory in the PowerPoint, is the fact that they admittedly come to state that their ERs, all three of them, are performing below provincial targets. They talk about best practices, Your Worship, yet they don't mention that they plan on moving labor and delivery out of our hospital, that children won't be born in Niagara Falls, that mothers will have to leave the city, they don't have a transportation system in place, and we're not sure how they're going to get there, but they're going to have their babies in St. Catharines, or Welland, we don't know yet, because they've avoided that. And, Your Worship, best practices says that, if they're using best practices, we know that they use it when it's convenient. Best practices, in this case, would state, would certainly dictate you would have labor and delivery in Niagara Falls, this is where the greatest growth of birthing is in the region. St. Catharines is the greatest decrease, that's not best practices, it's best practices when it's convenient, Your Worship. I mean, all you have to do is look at the longstanding sanction by the Ontario Nurses Association, the non-confidence vote by the Medical Association, the, as I mentioned earlier, the maternity in pediatrics, the exodus of several dedicated, long-serving emergency physicians, that's great, they brought five in from Manitoba, after they chased away some great doctors that we had here, and some wonderful, wonderful people. You know, and as well, Your Worship, it's already been pointed out by the Ontario Medical Association on emergency medicine, and the emergency physicians of Ontario have provided a review of the GNGH Emergency Department, and determined that the Niagara Falls community is unlikely to see stable emergency physician staffing for years to come, and will continue to risk imminent department closure. Your Worship, we're asking for a provincial investigator, we're not asking for the Niagara Falls citizens to pay half a million, Your Worship, we're asking for the province to step in and to do the right thing, and it's already been identified, and I'm sure Counselor Iannoni will allude to our meeting with counsel, with Minister Matthews, but we have problems, Your Worship, we can't cover our eyes and say that there aren't problems, there absolutely are problems, there are serious problems, Your Worship, and that is the reason that this council unanimously, over and over, came forward with resolutions that you signed, agreeing, and, Your Worship, nothing has changed, the only thing that changes is the excuses. And, Your Worship, I'm here to ask you, if on this Thursday, if you're intending to vote to ratify the decision to ask that no more, that no more reviews or investigations take place of the NHS, Your Worship, and I'm just, I want to ask you, Your Worship, are you voting to close the door on any future investigations and ratify this decision, this motion, this Thursday at regional council?
Thank you, Counsel, for your question, I want to qualify one thing, by the way, and you did mention about the complaint process, about the 700 complaints, which, if you look at the total picture, there are over 400,000 patient encounters, and they said that that was less than 1%, so you have to qualify your comments. As far as your question goes, yes, I'm voting for good healthcare, and I'd like to say to you that nothing that you have done, nothing, no negatives, at this point, all the negatives you've brought forward have been improved upon without this challenge that you have issued, we've had direct contact with the minister, and nothing that you've done in the last two years has made the system any better. And I'm saying to you, it's time to get on with our lives, I'm not prepared to spend $500,000 of, or more, of taxpayers' money, and put the staff and the practitioners through that morale beater, if you want to say, again, to waste more time and more money to come up to the same conclusion. Niagara Falls is not unique, Niagara's not unique, in fact, there are challenges that we're faced with, and this matter, I can remember, Counsel, in 1982, I sat on a study group with our social planning council, looked at nursing care from birth to death, that was 1982, okay, that was, what, 20, 18, 28 years ago, and nothing had changed with respect to the problem we have with beds and congestion at our hospital. We have acute care beds, they're taken up by people who can't be moved out to other facilities, because we haven't still got the number of beds. Every government that's had a chance, every party that's had a chance to govern the problems of Ontario in the last 30 or 40 years, has tried to change healthcare, and we keep throwing more taxpayers' money at it, so I'll say to the taxpayer, I'm not prepared to spend another half a million dollars, now the 11th review, and more time, and beating up on the staff, only to find out that there's not going to be any change. I'd rather spend that money towards change, and we've had, by working together, we've had some change. And by the way, there's additional information coming, that I'm not able to share with you, with respect to some of the comments you made, that will prove your comments to be incorrect. So, we have had the benefit of that knowledge, I'm sharing that with you, I'm giving you the benefit, I know we all have a passion here, we all want to provide the best healthcare, and let me just tell you, from what I heard, as a member of regional council, again, and we're not bound, and I was, I want to explain that, but my, the first words out of my mouth were, that our council voted unanimously, unanimously to support a review, but after what I heard, and what I've seen, I, and that was all since our August 9th decision, that there's additional information, Counsel, that I think we should all adhere to and listen to. So I'm not afraid to stand up for the benefit of healthcare in Niagara, and the fact that you've got $500,000 of taxpayers' money, again, going to a consultant, for what reason? Let's put it into practice, into physical assets, and make the system better. Counselor, do you want some more comments? Pardon, Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you, I'm a little confused.
You shouldn't be.
Trust me, those comments, you should be. I think the residents are going to be a little bit confused, too. First of all, let's talk about how you vote. I would assume that you are sitting at regional councillor as the mayor of this municipality, or you wouldn't be at regional.
I'm sitting as a councillor, I'm sitting as a councillor to qualify that, as a councillor, not as the mayor, they don't refer to you as a mayor, you sit there as a councillor, and the regional chair.
Would you be here if you weren't mayor?
I'm sitting there as a councillor.
Okay, my question's answered.
Correct that.
But I will say to you, you just talked about, you heard new information, and you talked about the reviews for Port Colborne and Fort Erie, good for them, their mayor stood up for them, their mayors went and said, we need an investigation, we need to save the services we have here, and I hate to argue with you, Mr. Mayor, but guess what? We still have Peds here, and we still have maternity here for the time being, and this council has screamed at the top of their lungs to keep them, and they were supposed to come out in January, and they're supposed to come out in July, the, I don't represent Fort Erie and Port Colborne, good for them, their mayors backed their councils, too bad for us, ours doesn't. But I'm going to tell you.
Point of order, point of clarification, their mayors were not present at that meeting.
Their mayors have backed their councils.
Their mayors were not present at that.
Over and, but their mayors a whole Thursday, and I can almost guarantee you, their mayors will vote for their community.
Their mayors were not present at the committee meeting.
And I want to explain something else to the residents, we sat with the Minister of Health, I think it was the third week of August, in the third week of August, Counselor Diodati and I tag teamed the minister, we went from topic to topic to topic, and at the end of our conversation, Mr. Mayor, you said to the minister, and I quote, and Counselor Diodati can correct me, "The reason I supported our council's motion for an investigation was the lack of communication with the NHS and the rest of us." I don't know if that communication has improved, because you might have got an invite to that quarterly meeting, but we all used to get that invite, and we didn't get it, so lucky you, because we'd have gone. Just so that you're clear, those of us who are passionate about Niagara Falls, Matt, child in a merge, we would have gone, because we're not afraid to speak to the NHS and tell them what we think. But I will say to you, none of the issues that we're dealing with here in Niagara Falls have been resolved. We have not been told we're going to keep those two services, maternity and pediatrics, we still have them, and I think if we'd have sat passively, sat back and said, guess what? You can take our services, they'd be gone. I think Fort Erie and Port Colborne are getting their reviews, because their citizens have screamed loud and hard, and we're getting the calls all the time. He tells you the story of that older gentleman, I can tell you the story of a woman who called and said, she ended up in a merge on an ambulance, via ambulance, she sat there 15 hours, called her family and said, come and get me, I am not lying here anymore, and she didn't have care. We aren't any better, they can parade that NHS commercial out to you all they want, but if the residents are calling us, and the residents want better service here, then as a councillor, I'm going to continue to go after the Minister of Health, and the Premier, and the NHS, and the LIN, who, by the way, didn't even fulfill their own obligation about open and transparent meetings according to the ombudsman, nothing's fixed. You can buy the spin they're giving you, but the residents still are not guaranteed that those services are here. I just think Port and Fort are awfully lucky to have mayors that support their councils.
Counselor, I'm going to advise you on a couple of things, first of all.
Sure, you go ahead.
The, excuse me.
Go.
I don't think those comments are called for.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, keep going. Are you sitting there for FaceTime, or you want to explain?
Would you refrain from those comments, please?
Then explain.
I'm chairing the meeting.
Don't you?
You, you've had an opportunity to listen, and you actually had an opportunity to present. I've attended a number of meetings, and the meetings that we are called, are called by the NHS, and when they call a meeting, I attend. Now, whether you attend or not is your business, and their business if they invite you. I have to tell you, that nothing has convinced me that it's worth spending a half a million dollars after hearing the facts again, and I'm explaining that, and you know what, personal experience, my father-in-law died this past year, he spent three years, three days in a merge, he didn't die in emergency, but he spent three days there, and I understood, I didn't get any special treatment, he didn't get any special treatment because, because of who I am, and I understood the situation. He was in a bed, he had curtains around him, and he was in a holding area, which they call emergency. So, I experienced this firsthand, so I don't need to be dictated by, by you, Counsel, or anybody else with respect to the experience, I went through it firsthand. I also experienced a centre of excellence, and I had to travel from Niagara Falls to Hamilton, to get a bypass, and I was pleased to do so. And I've never heard anybody complain about taking their unborn child, their pregnant wife, or their newly born with complications, to a centre of excellence in Hamilton, at McMaster University. And the NHS is trying to create a centre of excellence here, whether it's done in Niagara Falls, or in St Catherine's, or in Welland, or whatever the case might be, that's what they're trying to do. You're not having, you're not giving them the opportunity to get that far. The minister did not, did not accept your proposition. You spoke freely, we introduced you to the minister, you had a chance to meet her in the hallway beforehand, and corner her in the hall, whatever you did, because you mentioned that you had talked to her. And importantly, we had a chance to express this directly to the Minister of Health, directly to the minister, and she was not committed to saying, "I will order a review." She said exactly that she would welcome any advice on how to restore the confidence of the people of Niagara regarding healthcare. And that was her comment to us, to the four of us who attended from the city of Niagara Falls. Now, I have to tell you, spending $500,000, in my mind, is not going to, is not going to be productive by any means, it's money that could be spent on the system and making it better. When you hear the information, and you're certainly free to call anybody at the NHS to listen, it's not propaganda, they have facts that have been backed up, you've got a copy that's sent to you, they told us they were sending it out to all the councillors, and they did so. This was as a result of the package that we had presented to us at Regional Council last week. Now, it's additional information, it's new information that we did not have here when we made that motion. And I'm certainly not foolish enough to say, "I'll never change my mind." When I hear new information that's going to change the facts as I know them, we heard one side from the Ontario Health Coalition, and they've got their slant, and I've heard the comments from the NHS, and somewhere in the middle, I believe to be the truth. And I can't say spending $500,000 or more on another study, 11th study, a review, is going to make sense. Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the minister had said to us that she understood from all the comments that she had heard, that something in Niagara Falls was broken. She used the word "broken," and she actually said, "I may have to take a special tact to deal with the problems in Niagara Falls." That's what she said, and she wasn't cornered in a corner, Mr. Mayor, she held a LIN forum that morning, and I had the opportunity to put council's motion asking for an investigation, and asking that the hospital board retained governance over our hospital on the floor at that LIN morning, that morning, as did probably eight other municipalities, because she's hearing the same thing from municipality to municipality. So she admitted to us, "It's broken down here." She admitted to us that she might have to do something special to deal with Niagara Falls. Those were her words to us.
Well councillor, I have to tell you, at least she sat with us, and it was better than before, because the previous minister wouldn't sit with us because of your comments, and he, you made that clear, you came to and reported that to us, because you were told that at AMO two years ago.
Yeah, because I'm not-
The minister wouldn't sit with you because of your approach.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the difference is, I am not afraid to speak out for the residents because it might tick off a level of government. The residents would kind of like to see you do the same thing.
Yeah, well, I'm working on behalf of the residents as well, and I don't have to be told on how to act. I know that $500,000 of taxpayers' money going up in smoke for another review doesn't make sense. Councillor Wing, thank you.
Thank you. I understood it was a provincial review being called for, and I certainly support that concept. I'd just like to say, I don't think the community, or the medical community, has confidence in the NHS's ability to create a centre of excellence. I don't think they have confidence in the ability to, of the NHS, to meet its stated goal of providing quality healthcare and accessible healthcare. You know, it's under the NHS that the quality has declined dramatically, that the accessibility is declining. And I don't remember any of this dissatisfaction, or these horror stories, before the LIN system was created, before the NHS was created. This has all arisen since those changes were made. And if you step back and you look at the big picture, it's very evident that a different model is what's needed. And I don't know whether it's a model of you have been elected accountable local hospital boards or what, but the model that we are operating under is woefully inadequate. It's just not working. And I know we've sent resolutions to the province before, asking for a change, and we haven't got that kind of change yet. But what we really need is a provincial review, and I don't know why that would cost the taxpayers of this region half a million dollars. It's the province that we want to look at this badly, badly broken system and fix it.
Thank you councillor, I appreciate your passion, but you know, I should tell you that we, you have to understand the history of what happened. We had the problem with backing up beds back into the 80s and 70s. And you know, the merger of the NHS was the last system in Ontario to be merged, and it was the one that was least funded. They faced a number of challenges, so you've got to go back to a lot of history, and they'll explain that to you as well. That came forward. When they were merged, they did not have the same, they didn't get the same funding, they started with one hand tied behind their back, they had a pay equity issue to deal with, they never got that funded, so there are many, many issues that had to be dealt with. And when you listen to the complexity of this, and all the governments that we've talked about, that've tried to fix this, and all the concerns and all the issues you've raised over the last number of years, haven't produced any more positive results. So talk about insanity, you're going to take the horse and kick him again and expect him to get up? He's already down? So let's give them an opportunity, which they're working towards now, and they've sent some proper benchmarks, and the consultants, the province has to hire consultants to do these initiatives, do these reviews. They don't do it themselves, they have to hire professionals. And we've talked to the professionals, and the professionals are telling us what has to be done, and they're trying to make a difference. But there's many, many different complexities that are behind this issue, as to what happens when you get admitted or don't get admitted at the hospital. And this is not, this is not a council issue. I see that some members of council are trying to capitalize on this, it's like taking advantage of the weak. Well, we're trying to make the system better, and I prefer to build up rather than tear down. And that's what I stand for. And that's why I'm explaining what I did, and I came with this information to share that with you. And whether you believe it or not is your business, but I can justify my actions to the taxpayer, not to the council, but to the taxpayer who I owe my explanation to, and I represent them. And my point is, I'm not going to spend $500,000 more to find out the same thing. I'd rather spend $500,000 more to make the system better. And in fact, and what I heard was, we are making it better. We have more doctors coming now to Niagara Falls, five new doctors coming in, which is good in emergency. Last time, when you heard this comment, it was a solo practitioner, and they said to us, members of council, I didn't make this up, and it's not my issue, they said, "A solo practitioner on duty in emergency, even though they had it covered, was a recipe for disaster." So, am I going to dispute that? And all these reports that you have before you are clinically driven by the doctors, not by laypeople. So the doctors are telling us, and when I have a doctor argue with me, I say, "Look, I'm a patient, I'm not a practitioner, I don't have the formal education, and I don't practice in that hospital. I have to listen to the professionals who we pay. We have professionals around us and staff. We can listen to them, or we cannot listen to them. I prefer in this case to listen to the clinicians, clinicians who are making those judgments and telling us." And each of these reports, the LIN got information on the NHS restructuring because Kim Crater had asked for restructuring, a proposal, how they're going to operate more efficiently, they looked at operating in, not in isolation, but working together to try to create centres of excellence as an idea of bringing their costs down. Yes, there's give and take in every situation. I don't want to see us lose our hospital. Somebody's proposing that we have one central hospital. You know what that means? One central hospital means a closing of our local hospital. Because you're not going to have one central hospital and a whole bunch of little hospitals all around. So let's face facts. So the issue before us is, how do we spend the taxpayers' money in the best way? And that's what I'm talking about. And that's what I, and I account to the taxpayer. And I appreciate, I hope we have the same passion, you may have a different approach, and obviously your approach hasn't worked yet. Because of all the complaining you've done, nothing positive has come from what you've said yet, nothing. I can tell you, the positive I got was next door, and I asked for that $255,000 transportation bill to be eliminated. And they were going to accommodate us by locating a dialysis unit next door in a very accessible location. And that's the type of agreement that I like to work with, and I like to see people work together. Now, you can keep working against the system, keep kicking that dead horse, you're not going to go anywhere. We went right to the minister, and I recorded the information as I sat with the minister, members of council, I recorded the information, and the first thing that came out of my mouth when I spoke to this matter at the region was, "Our council voted unanimously." And I said that, and I made that unequivocal. And I said, "But I've heard enough information tonight that changed my mind." And that's what it's all about. So thank you. Any comments, councillor Deodati?
I just wanted to respond. This is a, it is a municipal issue because it's a community issue.
We're all concerned, councillor.
This is one of the number one concerns out there in the community, is the state of our healthcare system.
Sure, we're all concerned.
And, you know, I think it just proved my point to hear that the problem with bed backups goes back into the 1980s, because I've been on this council since the late 1990s, and it was only after the LINs and the NHS were set up, that I started hearing all these complaints and all these horror stories.
And councillor, you're correct. You know why it happened? Because we're underfunded. And we, 46% of our provincial budget goes to funding healthcare. And we've had our member here, he sat here, he sat that last meeting, he was with us last Thursday, he heard loud and clear, we're underfunded. We should be banging on the doors, and I've talked to councillor, to our Member of Parliament, Kim Crater, a number of times about this, we should be banging on his door and petitioning him to get more money. It's his budget, it's his government, and it's his jurisdiction. So it's nice that we want to capitalize on this, but we can't, other than trying to influence another politician, we can't make that vote. Anything we say here isn't going to change the funding. And that's what they're saying, they're underfunded. But we're finding this all across the province, we're finding it through the country. So 46% now, what is it tomorrow? What's it going to be? And the jurisdiction is held entirely by the province, not by the region, not by the city, not by any little town, it's by the province. And we got right to the minister, who, right to her face, we had a chance to say that. And she, and she made her comments to us. So we got as far as we could go. And if that's not adhered to, then shame on them. We are representing our constituents here, and I'm trying to make this system better for what input I could offer, not by tearing it apart, but by building it up. And that's my point to you. So everything you've done so far, show me the positive that came from it yet, nothing. My positive is that we're getting something done by having dialysis next door, by getting, by getting, and you know, in fact, I should say to the councillors, there's more information coming that I'm not able to share with you, because it's not public yet, but just, just stay tuned. Any comments, councillor Deodati?
Yes, your worship. I'm trying to keep this toned down and not to become overly political, it's hard not to. You know, your worship, you keep giving your stump speech about the $500,000. I'd be willing to bet, if you had asked the residents of Niagara, if we spent $500,000, we might have a path to rectify the broken system, they'd want to hear about it. Because what's happening now isn't working. You know, as it's been said, the horse is dead, dismount, this system isn't working. In baseball, you fire the manager when the team keeps losing. You've consistently sided with the NHS, not since this meeting you had last week, since the beginning. And that's okay, that's your prerogative, and I respect, everyone has their own opinion, that's fine. But I don't believe, the doctors, the nurses, the Ontario Health Coalition, the Ontario Medical Association, I don't believe, they're all wrong. I think that they have a lot of good input, and they have told us, we've got major problems. Because the management, the high-paid management tells us everything is great, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't accept that. Because the proof's in the pudding. We've got the longer wait times than the provincial targets, people are waiting enormous amounts of time, they're threatening, threatening us with moving our labour and delivery out of town, so they throw us a bone with the dialysis and then shut down our labour and delivery? I don't think that's a fair trade-off, your worship. I refuse to give up. I refuse to give up. And I think, you know, your worship, you know, you keep referring to them as the experts, remind you, the experts built the Titanic. And your worship, I think this is a fight worth fighting for, your worship, and I hope that you'll reconsider your vote, because I think-
Let me tell you, let me tell you, nobody has a greater passion-
Do I have the floor, your worship?
Sure, you do.
Okay, thank you. And, and I hope, your worship, that the vote this Thursday, which is a vote to say no more investigations of the NHS, no more challenges to their management, to me, that's giving the keys to the vault and saying, "Go to town." I don't think that that is a wise decision, your worship. I don't think that is a motion that would be incumbent upon us to support, and I hope, your worship, that you'll give second thought to that.
Well, I appreciate it, but nobody has a greater passion than we do here with the people of Niagara Falls in trying to provide healthcare. And it wasn't a matter of siding with the NHS, it's talking about sanity and trying to see where you're going to go with this and making some sense of it. And nothing you have done councillor, with all respect to your efforts and our efforts, has changed that, other than to say you oppose it. You're not making it better, you're fighting it. And my point is, I want to build up and not tear down, I've made that point a number of times, and I sat here one night explaining that. And the fact is, we've had some positives out of this yet, the fact is, if we have the dialysis delivered to us next door, and you should understand, are you aware of the motion that was made, that was passed substantially 12:03 after that motion? And it was in a spirit of cooperation. St Catherine's council didn't take a position, so we had, what, four or five, four, actually in addition to Port Colborne and Fort Erie, there was Thorpe, Niagara Falls, Waynefleet and Welland. And the mayor of Welland voted the same as I did, we didn't get together to decide how we're going to vote, it's what we heard. And you know, the resolution that came forward after that was one of spirit of cooperation. And I'm going to say, and people are reviewing reviews, so there's an agreement right now the NHS has to review Port Colborne and Fort Erie. And that's going to be after a two-year period, are you aware of that? So let me share some of this with you.
Are you asking any questions?
No, I'm just, I'm making a point. Whereas the council passed this motion at 12:03, after, it was recorded as well, after the, after the first motion. Whereas in June 2010, the Niagara Health Coalition outlined some specific concerns regarding the delivery of healthcare in Niagara, and called for another review of the Niagara Health System. And whereas a number of Niagara area municipalities have expressed concerns regarding the delivery of health and care in Niagara, and whereas the transformation of Niagara's hospital system continues to be a difficult and challenging process for the Niagara community and for the NHS healthcare professionals delivering that care, and whereas the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care has agreed that the NHS has been underfunded, and in 2010, provided the NHS with additional $14.1 million of ongoing annual funding increase, and a one-time funding of $25 million. Whereas the NHS is currently finalizing plans to meaningfully improve care over the short term. And whereas many of the changes to ensure and enhance the quality of hospital care over the long term have not been successfully implemented, they admit that. And whereas the NHS system has been extensively reviewed, having undergone multiple third-party quality reviews, efficiency reviews, expenditure control reviews, a review of all the reviews, annual audits, and the most recent accreditation review. And whereas the Ontario Ombudsman's recent report condemned the Niagara Hamilton, Branford Local Health Inigation Network, the LIN, for lack of transparency and made a series of recommendations for improvement. And the response was therefore be resolved that Regional Council does not believe another external review is necessary, nor that will improve the quality of healthcare in Niagara. And the Regional Council, again, works with, provides, wants to work with the NHB and the LIN to fully comply with the recommendations contained in the Ombudsman's report, and provide an update to Regional Council on their progress. And that the Regional Council work with the NHS to establish a more effective, regulated relationship, or regularized relationship, to improve the quality of healthcare for the residents of Niagara. And whereas the NHS is undertaking various initiatives to enhance the quality of care of delivery. Be it resolved that the Niagara Regional Council and healthcare system continue to work together to promote and enhance quality healthcare in Niagara. That passed 12:03. So have that information, deal with it, if you're placed in that position and you have to make a decision, base it on the facts that you have. And that's what we did. And not, and as I said, the easiest thing to do, members of council, would have been to say, "Sure, call for review." And I had that same feeling that night, we had a unanimous vote here, "Sure, call for review, another one." And then we explained 10 reviews, and this is going to be the 11th review, and another half a million dollars? half a million dollars? I'm sorry. I can't support that, and I can justify that to the taxpayer. And again, if it was within our jurisdiction, and we had a chance to make a difference here, if it was your decision and my decision to spend more money, we'd all commit more money. But it's not our decision. We should all be en masse, going up to the Minister's office or to the Member's office on Thorlstone Road and saying, hey, more money. And I've said it to Kim all along. He sat at that meeting, he listened to the first, he listened to the debate, this is committee, he saw this second resolution, he listened to that as well. So he knows that there's a funding issue, and that's the challenge we have. So I respect the fact that we have a passion for healthcare. Yes, it's how we get there. And I think what the difference is, Counselor, is your approach to mine. I prefer to work together, to build up and not to tear it down. And by, by going through another review, another, what, half a million dollars, another year of study, is not going to help us. We need care, and we need money for care now. That's the difference, Counselor.
Your Worship, you know, I don't appreciate you saying that we want to tear down. That is absolutely inaccurate. You mentioned earlier that we need a good foundation. And I said, absolutely, without a big, a good foundation, doesn't matter how tall you build it, it's going to fall down, Your Worship. The problem is, we don't have the foundation right now.
Because we're underfunded.
Okay, funding is one issue. I agree, that's one part of the issue. Management is the other part. We've got a lot of morale issues within the hospital. It's the way, you don't run doctors out of town, tell them how to do their job, and then tell everyone to smile and be happy. It doesn't work that way. And the part, Your Worship, that, and that's great, the spirit of cooperation at the region, you could call it group think just as well. I prefer, Your Worship, I think it's worth fighting for. I think that by us, you say nothing has come of it. I absolutely disagree. Our labor and delivery was already slated to be closed, and it's not.
It's not closed? I've talked to them about that. It's not closed?
It's still open. And why? Because we've been a squeaky wheel, Your Worship. And I think it's worth fighting for. I think our emergency ward and our labor and delivery are two areas that are worth fighting for. And I don't, Your Worship, it's not about tearing down. In the spirit of cooperation, Your Worship, I think we all work together. I think this, this whole council realizes that we want to build a solid hospital. We don't want to tear one down. Sometimes, though, it's like pruning, you have to cut it back. And maybe there's some issues with our management, Your Worship. I think a provincial review, a provincial investigator is what we need. The fact that we've had ten reviews tells us, something's wrong, that we keep having complaints, we keep having reviews. And the other thing, Your Worship, is, when the NHS commissions the review, I'm a little bit suspect of the outcome. Because as you know, staff can, can work with the group that is putting the review together, they become pretty comfortable. I think we need an independent provincial review, Your Worship. I think that's what we need. The minister admitted it's broken, broken, the doctors, the nurses, the patients, the Ontario Medical Association, the Ontario Health Coalition, they've all said it's broken, Your Worship. We know there's issues, let's fix it. I'm not saying tear it down, let's fix it. Let's start with a review, because we can't fix it until we've identified the problem. Let's get the review, let's identify the problem, then let's fix it. Let's do, let's not say we just need more money. Let's fix the problem, Your Worship. Because I agree, we've got to work together. This is our community hospital, and we need it to be better. Because right now, it's subpar. Through no fault of the staff, we've got great staff, but they're not giving enough, been given enough to work with. We need to work with them, identify the problems, correct it, and then move forward, Your Worship.
Well, nobody's going to fight harder for better healthcare in Niagara than myself. And I'll tell you that. And I think the question is, what have you accomplished so far? What have we accomplished here? And that's the issue. And I can tell you, by working with them, we've made things better, and we have improvements coming. And I'm going to say to you, Counselor, stay tuned, because you're going to hear some additional information yet. You're going to hear some better, better comments from the public, you're going to hear some better comments from, from staff. And you know, nobody ran anybody out of town. Those practitioners are able to practice here if they wish. What they did is, they had a franchise or a lock on that emergency unit, and I asked that question. And the first thing I did, members of council, and I should say to you, highly, highly regarded, our medical officer of health, Dr. Robin Williams, the first comment, when I got this on July 15th, two years ago, about the restructuring, I went to her and I said, Dr. Williams, what has to happen? As our medical officer of health, what has to happen? Her husband is a practitioner, she was a specialist. She said, Ted, this has to happen. This restructuring must take place. She's got the best interests of all of our interests at heart for the entire region. And you talk to her, and she'll tell you, this review had to happen, the recommendation in terms of the restructuring had to happen. She said it can't happen fast enough. And that's the first professional I went to. And as a person I respect, and she's working in the best interest of all those people in Niagara. So talk to her and ask her about that. And I went to the right side of the issue, and rather than, and as I say to you, to criticize, you have every right to criticize. And there's, nobody's going to fight harder on this issue than myself. And it wasn't a matter of ignoring this council. As I said, the easiest thing to do would have been to say, sure, have another review, spend another half a million dollars. The province will recommend who they're going to bring in as a consultant, and you're going to make the consultants richer. Put it in the system. I think we've discussed this long enough. So any other new business? Counselor Fisher?
I just want to leave the council with this little note. Monday, I spent some time in GNGH. And you're right, Counselor DiDaddi, the morale is way down, way down. Because I know quite a few of the nurses there, and they're very, very down. The other thing was, that really disturbed me, we were waiting two and a half hours for a doctor to come from Hamilton to, to, to deal with us. Why are we waiting for doctors to come from Hamilton? I don't understand that. And this isn't the first time I've had this total experience. One other time when I had Dawn in, we had to wait for hours for a doctor to come in from Hamilton. These are the problems we're dealing with. Maybe there is a future here, but we want to know how we're going to work with it. And what's happening? Why are we waiting two and a half, five hours for a doctor to come from somewhere else when we're supposed to be having all these doctors right here? I don't understand that. And also, planniness, not good.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern. Counselor Carroll and Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say that it certainly is admirable, both your positions, all of your positions, Counselor DiDaddi's, Wing, Aynoni, and yourself, Your Worship, you're all battling, we're all battling for the same thing. Unfortunately, it's not right. But I want the residents to know, and you've said it, and everyone's said it, for some reason, people seem to think, because we've taken up the charge, that somehow this council has more influence or more to say about the situation. This is a provincial matter. It falls within the provincial government. The residents have to understand that we can scream, we can holler, we can do everything that we want to do. And unfortunately, it falls within Mr. McGinty's government, who's represented in our community by Kim Crater. It's their government. No one's happy with what's going on there. I was attacked yesterday at a car show by some people who had waited an unbelievable amount of time for service at our emergency room. And I think that they didn't understand. I tried to explain that it was a provincial matter. And I think because of the notoriety that we brought at this council, I think they think that we have more to say or more influence over what happens than we do. It's not our issue. It's our issue to fight for what we have and to keep what we have. But we do not have the say. Kim Crater's provincial government is the only government, and the only level of government that can fix this problem. They have to fix it. We can scream, and I'm going to get on your side, and Jim's side, and Carolyn's side, and Genesis' side, and put my name along those who are screaming for those things to be fixed. But only that government is going to fix it. Whether it's review, whether it's more money, whatever it is, it is not right, and only they can fix it. And I just want to make sure that the residents understand that that falls squarely on the shoulders of McGinty's government and the Liberals. And our representative is the only one that can really have some impact.
Counselor Carroll, I appreciate your objective comment, that's exactly correct. I don't think anything is going to turn on the resolution one way or the other, to be honest with you, when we make that decision at Regional Council. We have, will have further debate with respect to that. But we had a chance to go directly to the minister. And, and we've had, and you hit the nail on the head, Counselor Carroll, we had a chance to explain to her, she's the one that presents the budget, and she knows the issues. She's been well briefed in matters of this kind, and she knows that we're not the only ones in this province that are suffering, that we're trying to make healthcare better. I think she's trying to make it better, but it's not, it's not working, for whatever reason.
Just want to make myself clear, Your Worship. I don't know, you have your opinion, DiDaddi's got his opinion, I don't know whether that would make the difference or not. I'm not siding on one way or another. This council voted to do it one way, it's your prerogative to do it, whatever you want.
And you know, that, that's a good point. That matter was brought forward to the council, and as I said, that was the first thing that I mentioned to the council, that we were in...
And I appreciate the fact that you made our position clear.
I did.
Because you do have, you do have the right to vote the way you want. But you did make our position clear, that this council unanimously voted to have that done. Whether or not it gets done or not, I don't know. But I'm just saying that it's the provincial government, and whether or not you vote, whatever way you vote, that's your prerogative. I don't know whether it will happen, whether it won't help. But I know it's not right, and I know that only the province can fix it. And I hope the residents understand that.
Yeah, that's true. I appreciate your point. Counselor Thompson and Counselor Maves?
Well, I think that's a bit of a cop-out personally. First of all, this goes back a long way. Goes back to the HIP program. I have, when I was in office here, I had a correspondence, a half-inch stick, that Mr. Irfita could provide to you tomorrow, about the initial fights we had with respect to what was going to happen with healthcare here. And we had the idea of a central hospital, having emergencies in local municipalities, and having excellence at that, located in a central area, rather than west end of St. Catherine's. Were all fights, how do we have any confidence in this at all? They said they were, had the land donated in St. Catherine's. Then we find out it cost $4 million. We had Mr. Takarchuk here, and we had issues with him, with the NHS. We had Mrs. Sevenpiper here, saying how well she got along with the doctors and, and the nurses. And they were all sitting in the, in the gallery here, all talking to us individually, telling us what a disaster it is, how they're being treated. And so we, we all collectively, with the exception of yourself, voted against the HIP program. That was the start of the whole thing coming about. But I tell you, we can sit back and do nothing, and all of a sudden, the province is going to say, well, Niagara Falls is okay, we're not hearing anything from them. What a, what a joke. How come Port Coburn and Fort Erie are getting a review after two years? Because of Martin and the Mayor of Port Coburn screaming and yelling and pounding that they wanted something done about healthcare in their area. And I tell you, if we give up, we have a serious problem. And $500,000, which is probably going to be funded by the province to carry out the study, is a pittance with respect to healthcare in this province if we're going to get people in the emergency quicker and, and have better medical treatment. Here, it's, it's just a natural, in my opinion. So I think we, we got to make sure that we keep the pressure on collectively, everyone in this council chamber, to make sure we get these reviews done, we keep the pressure on, because as soon as we stop that, then we have a, a serious problem, that we're going to get absolutely nothing. And you know, during all of this stuff, you, you hear people making comments, Peter Kormos up in Welland, demanding that the LINs and that the NHS be elected to, to office. And I'm thinking about this, and I, well, is that going to really make a difference? Then I questioned the people who represent, people from Niagara Falls who were sitting on the NHS. And I said to them, what's going on? Why can't you people stand up and be counted for Niagara Falls? And they said, immediately, both of them, when I asked them, they said, we don't represent Niagara Falls. I said, what are you talking about? You live here, this is your community. Oh, no, we represent the region.